As a special treat tonight, Councillor Thompson is going to lead us into Canada. Councillor Thompson, you want to?
Okay, first off, adoption of the minutes from the August 15th and 25th meetings. Moved by Councillor May, second by Councillor Peter Angelo. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Next, our business is disclosures of pecuniary interest. Councillor Thompson?
Yes, in the committee meeting prior, there was a matter 21000422 Ontario Limited Hampton Inn. I have a conflict.
Okay, Councillor Morocco?
Pecuniary interest on number 348503 and a number 348406, 348193, and also Hampton conflict as well downstairs. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Wayne?
Yes, I have the same conflict on the in-camera matter as Councillors Thompson and Morocco because of my husband's employment. I'm also going to call a conflict on the Brock students matter because my daughter is one of them.
Okay, we've got Councillor Peter Angelo?
Thanks, your worship PD 201163. My parents live in close proximity.
Okay. Is there any other conflicts? And I've got myself, check numbers 347952 and 348456. Checks made out to myself. All right. We're ready for our deputations and presentations. First up, we have the Alzheimer Society. Are we here? Okay, we've got Tina here, Chief Executive Officer of the Alzheimer Society of Niagara. She's going to make a deputation to council tonight. Welcome to the meeting, Tina.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Diodati, members of council, city staff, and the members of the general public. My name is Tina Kent, and I am the CEO of the Alzheimer Society of Niagara Region and their foundation. I would like to thank you for this opportunity to speak to you about our 16th Annual Coffee Break. National Coffee Break Day was kicked off this past Thursday, September the 15th, and started our annual campaign. The idea of a coffee break is to make your coffee count. This concept was inspired by two of our very own councillors during a conference in Scotland where they were introduced to a tea break. As we all know Canadians, we love our coffee, and that's where Coffee Break originated. Our vision has evolved into a national fundraiser for Alzheimer societies across Canada that have raised millions of dollars. It is a fun and social, easy and easy to participate. The society supplies a kit, and the host supplies the people. A kit includes a first pot of coffee, a donation box, and all the promotional signs and literature that you need. An Alzheimer Coffee Break is a time that you invite your coworkers, your clients, your family and friends to enjoy a cup of coffee or any other beverage at a break time or specific get-together. Then you simply ask for a donation. Cindy Cameron of the Sobies and Freshco is our honorary chair this year. Freshco and Bunding Road in St. Catharines launched our campaign last Thursday with a barbecue and its quench mobile. There will be several barbecues and events held at Sobies and Freshco's around the region this month of September. So there'll be participating stores asking the registers to donate to the Alzheimer Society and get a coffee cup decal. So we hope you will all support that. While some coffee breaks in Canada were held on the national day, you can certainly choose a date that is more convenient to yourself. We run our local campaign from September to December. And it's also not just limited to a coffee break. Some of the most successful coffee breaks in the past have involved doing something a little bit different. Many hosts have open houses, barbecues, raffles, dress-down days, and they sell coffee cup decals and cashiers to roundups. Alzheimer disease is a progressive degenerative brain disease that causes the brain cells to shrink and disappear. The cells are replaced by dense spots and plaques and thread-like tangles. These tangles eventually choke the healthy brain cells, making the simple activities of life a challenge. Imagine visiting your own mother and she not knowing who you are. Dementia robs a person of their mind and takes them away from our families. Niagara is a retirement community and has one of the largest senior populations in Canada, and yet we lack the available geriatric services compared to other communities. It is estimated that 1 in 11 Canadians over 65 have Alzheimer disease or related dementia. Here in Niagara, there are 8,200 people experiencing a progressive dementia. In January 2010, the Alzheimer Society of Canada released a study entitled Rising Tide: The Impact of Dementia on the Canadian Society. This data had sobering statistics. Currently, there are over half a million Canadians living with dementia, and within that generation, it's going to double to 1.3 million people. This means that someone in Canada will develop dementia every two minutes, which is up from five minutes, the current stat. While most people consider dementia to be a disease that affects only the elderly, that is not the case. 71,000 Canadians living with dementia are under the age of 65. We also know that people that are diagnosed early have a unique and strong position because their voices can be heard and they can obtain the support and resources that they need to continue living meaningful lives. Only the genetic risk and aging are beyond our control. By adopting appropriate healthy lifestyles now, one can lower one's own risk of dementia. We all need to be good to our brains. Recent discoveries suggest that healthy lifestyles may even help the creation of new nerve cells. One should exercise, eat properly, reduce our stress, and by just socializing and laughing, you can exercise your own brain. And although healthcare delivery is a provincial mandate, Alzheimer societies across Canada believe that there is a national crisis which requires all of us to think integratively and find effective solutions. Collectively, we are calling upon the government of Canada to demonstrate leadership by sponsoring the development of a national strategy that would assess the needs of Canadians touched with dementia. Many countries much, much smaller than ours have a national dementia strategy. So currently on our website, you can go on and become a champion for dementia before the election. The Alzheimer Society of Niagara Region is proud to be making a difference. We provide ongoing emotional support, education, and assistance to those individuals experiencing progressive dementia and their families during this difficult journey. Every year, the society must fundraise to raise about half a million dollars of a $1.8 million budget. Coffee Break is our signature event. It is very simple to organize, and the money stays here in Niagara to help our own neighbors. I encourage all of you to host your own events. Every Coffee Break makes a difference, big or small. And thanks to this council and about 300 hosts last year, we raised $95,000. This year, more than ever, we need to count on your support to reach our goal of $100,000. One of our major supporters has experienced a corporate change and will not be supporting this event in the same capacity. So we are currently looking for new hosts. Anyone can register for a Coffee Break kit by simply calling the Alzheimer Society of Niagara at 905-687-3914 or visiting our website at AlzheimerNiagara.ca. So I thank you very much for your time for listening to me and this worthwhile endeavor. And I know Mayor Diodati, you usually run a Coffee Break with your council, and I have your kit.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Tina. And yes, we will be, as usual, running our regular Coffee Break here. And as soon as we have all the particulars settled, we're going to announce that to all the council and the public and the staff and whatnot, and they'll all come out to it. Were there any questions of Tina tonight in regard to the Alzheimer's? Councillor Thompson? Oh, were you just, yeah?
Yeah, thank you for calling me. I just want to indicate that I fully support what is going on. And as I listen to your discussion there, a lot of people who haven't directly experienced this situation, they can't really appreciate it. My father, who was the fire chief here for many years, ended up with Alzheimer's. And I recall getting a call one day at my home, which he never really called me at home that often, and indicated that he didn't know who the woman in the kitchen was, which obviously was my mother. So I hope everybody will come out and support. Thank you.
Thank you. It is a terrible disease for the families. Robbed them before their lives are over.
Absolutely, it sure is. Well, thank you very much. We'll have an opportunity to support you through our Coffee Break, Tina. We appreciate you coming on.
All right, can I present you with your kit?
Sure, of course. Thanks very much. Thanks, Tina. And we'll pay you for that afterwards, Tina, if that's okay? Okay, next up, we've got the Brock University Students Union. I understand that we've got Dodd, Gruel, President, and the Vice President, Will Perrant, coming here to address the council. I got those two right? Yeah? Welcome, gentlemen. And I understand Dodd used to be a member of the mayor's youth advisory at one time as well.
Yeah, a few years ago now.
A few years ago, that's great. Well, good to have you back, yeah.
Thank you. Is there a place you can plug this in?
You gotta, where do they plug that? What do you have?
Okay. I'll just plug it in. Is this the jet?
Yeah, we're gonna turn it on right now.
All right. Let me take a minute.
Warm it up. You guys know any card tricks or anything? Okay, sure. Maybe just a little bit of background for the council and those watching at home. We traditionally run a Brock service for the Brock students from Niagara Falls to the university as well, to Niagara College, and we link that with Fort Erie. And we've recently been going through the negotiations with Brock University. So we were a little bit down to the wire, but we did get it extended to the Christmas break. So we're good for now, and now they want to come forward, moving forward. So our goal is to get something more long-term, so we don't have to be down to the wire, and at the same time, you know, something that we can plan forward rather than react to. So that's kind of what brings us today. And they requested to come speak to the council to give some input, maybe receive some feedback. And have I talked long enough? We ready to fire that up, or what have we got to do now?
Yeah, I'm trying to open up the USBs. I don't think it's giving me the option. Uh, maybe if I refresh? Hopefully. No? Sorry, guys. Are you getting the whole thing sent in?
No pressure, we're just gonna all stare at you right now.
Yeah, no, don't worry, don't worry. Feels like a council meeting at Brock right now. Those are more intense and less civilized.
Yeah, what are you saying? Bill Matson would have had this fixed, mate? Our deputy clerk?
Does it have an email? Maybe just jump to my email.
Uh, no.
No, okay. All right, we could probably just wing it.
Yeah.
What if you plug it right into the computer, that won't help, no?
Okay, well, I guess we'll try to wing it. It was kind of important to see some of the numbers we're gonna put up there, but it might be a bit more difficult to do that. So we'll try to kind of verbalize what we want to say. So, yeah, okay, well, thank you very much for letting us speak. We're with the Brock University Students Union. We represent 17,000 undergraduate students. We have a... We have a, well, we have a legitimate governing structures. We have board directors, BUSAC, similar to city council that we report to. And all of our spending has to be justified to our constituents, so, yeah. Oh, you don't have a presentation yet? There you go.
I just had my phone in front of me, we're gonna make copies for yourselves, so you can follow along with us. So a little background here. The BUSU mandate that we follow, we had a referendum that was passed back in 2003 for the students in order to allow us to collect the fee from the students to provide an intermunicipal transit system to link the municipalities of Niagara Falls to Brock for the students who live in this community to come to campus accessibly to get to class and to get involved with any activities that we provide very accessibly, to save them on the transportation costs. So on our end, we also have an agreement with the well-intranced system and through St. Catharines. So this is one of the three that we provide. And at this point in time, we're hoping to be able to speak with you and provide some background on us and what we're hoping to get to, to improve the service for the students.
All right, so just a bit of history. We've had an agreement with Niagara Falls Transit in 2003, which we've continued. And the total original cost of the service was about $64,000 in 2003. And the agreement kind of allowed for 5% increases per year, depending on if there were justified increases based on, you know, there's increases in prices and gas and infrastructure and those kind of things. And so, and this year's costs right now are slated to be about $140,000. So it's about a, well, it's more than, I think, 118% increase from $64,000 in 2003 to now, which is about $140,000 plus for this year. So, all right.
Okay. In comparing our costs at Brock University and the fees that we take in to other universities in Ontario, we're actually, as of 2009, 2010 academic year, the third largest. At which point in time, we were taking in $153.14 per Brock University student that was taking 1.5 credits or more. The third largest in Ontario for the service that we're doing. And we're also trying to link three municipalities together to provide the service for students. Now, there's one specific link that we have here now this year. Based on those fees, we're trying to get the best result for the students, but as well looking at the cost effectiveness of it and the sustainability of the program long-term on our end. Sorry.
All right. So, yeah, I think the main thing, one of the things that coming in, as my role as president, I have to be looking at the long-term impact of the UPAS program. And over the past eight years, we've seen a kind of a total increase of 118%, I consider, and an increase of $76,000 in transit. And even since 2006, after our services increased, we saw a five-year fee increase of $45,600, or 48.3% over five years, which adds up to an average of 9.66% increase per year. Now, I know it's tough, you can't really see these numbers, but basically it lays out the increases per year. So in some years, it was 5%, in other years, like in 2006, the increase was about 33.79%. And that made sense because we kind of added service at that point in time as well. But as it increased, it went 5% the following year. Last year, I believe it was around, I don't have the numbers here.
I'm sorry.
I think last year was about 12.41% was increased. This year is about 13.41 is the increase. And the main thing we're kind of looking at is that we need to be able to kind of somehow budget for transit in the upcoming years. And it looks like that if we keep on going with these increases downline, five, 10 years from now, or five years from now, it could go up to 200,000 plus. And that's the difficult part that we have with this, that we have a certain amount of fee that we collect from students, but when that runs out, we don't have any more money left. So we have to go back to students for referendum to increase the fee. And our fear is that at that point in time, that referendum could potentially fail. Because right now, we have a lot of students coming up to us and saying, well, why do we have to pay for UPAS when I drive to school, when I don't live in the area, and those sorts of things? So there is a fear that in the long-term, that we'll have to go back to referendum. It'll be tough to get that funding in. And the main thing is that, we understand there's increased costs up to 5%, but when it goes higher than 5%, when the increases go higher than 5%, that's when it becomes very tough for us to budget for that. And it has a big impact on the long-term sustainability of this UPAS program. So cost recovery on the part of the, I think, city councils is very important. You guys are, well, at least from what I understand, there is a mandate to recover most of the funds for the UPAS, or for your transit. And we understand that. And we have a growing student population as well, and we want to increase service. We want to invest more money into Niagara Falls Transit so we can get more service for students. But we're just having a tough time with the service increases that we've seen over the last, well, about, will be eight years or nine years or so.
Gentlemen, just to that point, we have a question. Councillor Ayenoni? Yeah?
Thank you. Can you explain that? Explain what you mean to that point.
About the increases?
Yes. You said you wanted an increase in runs, but is that what you said? You wanted to increase runs?
Yeah, we'd like to invest more money, but when we go back to our board and to our council and explain to them what the increases are like, they're a bit hesitant to invest more into Niagara Falls Transit, essentially is what it comes down to.
Why?
Well, because, the main thing is because the, for the increases that we've seen happen, they want to see that resolved to some extent first, to see that the program is sustainable, and then let's invest more money into, to try to get more service runs.
Now, the city has created a transportation committee to look at this. Has BUSU been invited to come and speak to that transportation committee?
I don't think we, maybe we have at a previous term? Again, I'm only here for one year.
No, it would have been in the last four months.
The last four months, I don't think we have, maybe will?
To my knowledge, no. The specific committee is speaking, no.
Were you asked to participate on the city committee?
At this point in time, I'm gonna say no. I don't, I can't refer to the specific one we're talking about. I see kind of over in the disbursement, we had the luxury, actually, previously, of meeting with Carl and Dave, and we have in the past, but this specific committee you referred to, I don't think that we have had the chance to.
Okay.
Do you want to ask staff if they are aware, or? Okay, all right, okay, continue, gentlemen.
Okay. Good stuff. Great. So...
So I guess we kind of spoke a bit on the program itself, the operation of the bus back and forth, the linking of the communities, providing the service to the students to be able to access the Brock University campus accessibly. One of the reasons we want to speak to you today is to look at the economic side of things and what's happened. Now, I realize at this point in time, there is the intermunicipal transit system that's recently, as of this month, been set up and begun to run to provide this service, to link different communities within the area, to provide that service to regional, local folks. Now, that doesn't involve students. Now, but to this point in time, since 2003, when we're providing this, we're providing a service back and forth, they didn't look at just students, but also community members. Now, at this point in time, based on the price, the sustainability down the road in the long-term, we want to look at Niagara Falls residences, families, the fact that they are taxpayers, residences. If they're students from not in this area that haven't grew up here with their families and their parents, they're folks that are coming here now to rent a local housing unit in Niagara Falls to then transport back and forth to Brock University as it is accessible to them. Now, if it is folks that have grew up here, gone to high school here, elementary school, and now are continuing their education in the Niagara region and are staying local to Niagara Falls, these are residences that have provided an economic impact to the area and aren't leaving. So in two ways we can look at it, as well students that are Brock University students use this transit service to come to Niagara Falls to access the many different services that are provided through the city. Whether that be more the younger generation aspect of entertainment in the area, looking at the Clifton Hill side of things, or the various services that are provided, doctors, various businesses in the community, shopping centers, students use that service and that transportation to link those two communities from that. And we do provide that, and they get that access. And as well, community members access that service to get into St. Catharines in the Niagara region up to this point in time, now that the intermunicipal is being created. Up to this point in time, the fare for non-students to ride this has been $3.75 since the beginning of the service. That fare has not increased or changed at any point in time, whereas the operating cost for the bus for us has increased substantially year to year.
Yeah, and I think that's all we have. But, yeah, so the main thing that we're kind of going at here is that we have been working with Wellin and St. Catharines Transit, and our contracts with them have been pretty, have at least in the outlook, looked a bit more sustainable. Our council and our, well, our board is a bit worried about the sustainability of our relationship with Niagara Falls Transit and the long-term impact of it. So if, in our contract since 2003, we've allowed for 5% increase if they were justified, and they have been increased 5% every year. It's just, especially this year, when we have an increase of about 12, 13%, it's a bit more tough to convince our board of that. And whereas, that was the same case last year as well. Last year, it was again around 12, 13% increase. When our board looks at that, it's like, well, with the other transit companies, we're working within a 5% increase. With Niagara Falls Transit, it doesn't seem like that's the case. So I understand cost recovery, but we're just having a, I think, it's very tough when we look at the long-term impact for our students union.
So what you're saying, if I understand correctly, is you're saying it's hard for you to justify to your board and to your council, you know, why the increase from our municipality above the 5%, which is your objective? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
And also, and I know, and we'll ask staff to maybe give some input into that. Yeah, Councillor Ayenoni?
Through you to staff, with that 13% increase, does that provide increased runs to Brock with that type of increase? Because I know with the survey that we've done, and we've been working, and I'm sorry, I thought you had been included, but we have been working on improve, I thought we were working on improving transit, transportation to Brock. So with the 13%, do you have additional runs?
We've had the same runs since 2006.
Well, those runs aren't working because your students are telling me that those runs aren't working. Your students have told our committee those runs aren't working. So have you looked at increasing the runs?
I think we would like to. I think from our part...
Have you approached the city to increase the runs?
Well, we haven't approached the city to increase those runs specifically.
Okay.
No, we haven't. And that's mainly because it's hard to bring this to our board and say we want to bring more funds into it when they don't feel like that the money we're putting into it right now, like in terms of sustainability, they're worried about that.
For every, for us to add another hour or another bus route service throughout the area?
Your service is not adequate. Like, your students have to be telling you that because I know they're telling us that.
Well, and especially this year, when we have the increased student load.
Yes.
There's an increased number of students, I think, coming. And over the years, we've seen a lot of students, kind of, before, we've never had the case where the bus had to pass by students. But we are now getting complaints that they have to pass by the students because they can't pick them up, and that means they're missing classes. And that for us is a big worry, and I've been getting those complaints.
And I've heard from your students, and I've asked our staff, and it was due to the contract between BUSU and the city, was my understanding. So have you looked at increasing the runs? And I'll stop there because what I want to know from staff is, does the 13% include a run increase? Because I'm telling you and the council here, we are not servicing Brock adequately. The kids are telling us that. They told us that through the election, they've told us that through the surveys, they've told us that through the phone calls. And I was under the assumption it was because of our agreement with BUSU. So it has to get better because you've got kids not being able to get to class. So does that 13% increase include an increase in runs?
Okay, well, that's Carl?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The 13% does not include that. There's been fuel, rising fuel costs at 30% over the last couple of years. We, at the beginning of each negotiation, sit down with Brock, provide them, ask them what they want, provide them with what they want, but provide many alternatives to increase service. Again, you know, they're buying the service, they only have so much money. They only have so many resources to do it. But we offer them many, many options to purchase service. We sit down with them, we sat down with them last year, we sat down with them this year. So we continue to try and negotiate with them to say, how can we improve for your students? And again, it comes down to a funding thing that, you know, they can only afford so much service. The service that's operating now has pretty much been the same for the last few years with some minor adjustments. And, you know, we're trying to steer them to perhaps one location similar to what Niagara College does. They go to the former Walmart site, and everything resonates out of that. You know, so we're looking at many options with them. And so, you know, we're trying to help them out. But again, they're paying for the service, so they tell us what they want. We advise them about connections, we advise them about all of our routes. The problem we have right now is we have hourly service. And, you know, we're gonna come back later on with a report that will not only benefit us as our service, but also benefit Brock because the connections will be easier. So in other words, if a student misses a connection, they have to wait another hour to catch a bus. And it may not be there because Brock doesn't have a bus going. So what you're trying to do is improve service all around. We have limitations with our current service. If they miss it, they could be sitting around for a while. We do add buses. In fact, you know, last several weeks, we've doubled up on their service, and we took advantage of utilizing perhaps Niagara College empty runs and, you know, filled the buses. So we're doubling up, and that's something we wouldn't charge Brock for. We normally would. Like, we normally would charge if you put another bus out. But if we can use the service back and forth, the supervisor will make a decision, okay, let the Brock students go there, or go to Niagara College, and they'll drop off there. You know, so there's many opportunities for us to help them out. And so, you know, we continue to do that. And as far as ridership, and we've provided them with the numbers, there's 27,000 passenger trips that take place on our buses that the Brock students benefit from with no extra upcharge. And council's aware of that. We provided that to them when we put these agreements forward, saying... provided that to them when we, when we put these agreements forward, saying that they can ride our buses at no extra cost. So, we're, so we're trying to help them and trying to get them on there, and there is utilization. The fact is, costs have risen, and gas is the biggest culprit, uh, at 30%. So, uh, you know, our hands are tied. You know, as far as what we do compared to Welland and Niagara Falls, or, sorry, St. Catherine's, we're right in the middle. So, St. Catherine's is the highest charge, per, we're next, and then Welland. And it's based on size of operation, it's based on operating costs. So, we're charging them what it costs us.
Okay, thank you. Counselor?
And, and, and Mr. Dren's right, it, our problem is our hour service. And, and you, the committee will come back with recommendations. One of our recommendations, we'll be bringing it to half an hour service, which always costs money. But, understanding that presentation to yours, this is what, this is how, what, just to put it bluntly, you don't have a whole lot of choice but to go back to your membership and tell them to increase the runs will be an increase in costs. Any, you're, it, that's no different, you use the analogy that it's like council. It's no different than us going to the residence, say, for the service we provide you that we increase, we have to raise your taxes this much. I, I, I will tell you, fuel costs for your car and my car have gone up. I'm, I, for you, have you gone back to your membership and said to them, look, you want increased runs? It's going to cost you X amount more, vote on it?
Well, and, and I think, if, if it's, if it's cost recovery, we, we understand that. We, we really do. And we've been working with St. Catherine's and Welland in terms of cost recovery, in terms of the 5% increases, and that makes sense. It really does. And, um, and if, if we do look at, like, the, the numbers, and, like, looking at, uh, looking at the numbers that we've seen in terms of increases, I mean, we try to look at, we have, we try to look at the budgets of, of the Niagara Falls Transit as well, and to compare the increases in, in the budgets that, that you guys have, uh, and Niagara Falls Transit, I mean, over the last three years, it works out to about, uh, I don't think that's what it is, but it, it works out to about, uh, a 1.39% increase in your budget. Not much of that's, like, if, it's 1.39% increase, whereas we, 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 we increase by at least, well, we increase by 5%, right? So, if it, if it's justifiable, we're, we're, we're okay with, with paying the increase, it's just...
Well, the fuel costs, to me, would make it justifiable, having worked with these guys for the last six months to try to increase our transit system. But I'm asking you, have you gone back to your payers?
Hmm.
And said, if you want additional runs to the university, you are going to have to pay X amount more? Because I will tell you, as a parent who pays for a child in university, it wouldn't bother me to pay, say, an additional hundred bucks a month, a year, 200 bucks a year in the cost of university, to know that she has better transportation. So, have you gone back to your membership and had that vote taken?
As you're saying, our fear is, if we do that, our fears of taking, of taking that to referendum is that it won't pass, and if it doesn't pass...
Yeah, but if it passes, you're, if it doesn't pass, you're no farther behind than you are right now. But would you not think, if you're going to ask for improved service, you would do so knowing that your membership would back it first?
Well, sorry, and I think, you have to understand how a referendum process works. I really have to do a referendum at, for the, for the entire school, for 17,000 students, and when we go back to referendum, they'll vote on it, and we can't, we can't do it as a, well, here's this, we just want to increase. The way we, we'd have to do is that, here's the increase, and if they vote no to it, they vote no to the entire U-Pass program, uh, is the way we, we have to do it. And that's the fear, that we, we don't want to take this to referendum, because we don't want to lose, we don't want to kind of fight, uh, that battle at the, at that, at that...
I understand that. Nobody wants to pay more for anything. But if you, you pay for the service you get, if you want better service, and I'm, and I'm going to say better service, because I think our bus drivers are, are pretty good.
Yeah.
If you want increased service, and you need increased runs, you have to pay for increased runs.
So, if we're talking about in, in terms of number of runs, the number of runs we have are, are pretty similar to the number of runs we pay for, for Welland Transit, um, and, like, in terms of number. But if we're talking about load issues, like, the, the, the increased number of students, I think that's a bit, a bit different. So, we're talking about increased runs.
We're talking about increased runs, schedule of runs, because we, we've done a survey, which we really should give them some sort of access to, where, where the majority of respondents that are students are that they do not have enough runs to get to Brock University. And it comes back to, they get the service that Busu pays for.
Yeah.
So, I would recommend to you, as somebody who has read every single survey...
Yeah.
Maybe it's time for you to have a referendum.
Yeah?
With the, the note of the, um, the increased year-to-year, when this program first started in 2003 and had a three-year contract, the increase to the second and the third year were 5% respectively. With the reset-up of a new contract for an additional three years, it was set up with a cost, with an initial increase based on gas, which is understood over the course possibly of three years, operating expenses, various buses, increased load, whatever the case may be. There was a new contract set up, another two years respectively of a 5% increase. 2009 was the beginning of this. At that point in time, there was no contract set up at that point. So, through 2010, there was a leap of, uh, over a 12% increase, and now we're looking at the 13% increase into this year. So, what we typically would see would be a contract, which would have started 2009, a 5% increase in the price, and then a 5% increase into this year. We've looked at a 12% increase, and now a 13% increase. With our rates, if this continues down the road, we, we can't sustain that six years from now. But we would have been able to the five years through, uh, uh, with the 5% over the course of X amount of years. So, we're looking sustainability long-term on this. But we would love to operate more hours, and I agree with that 100%. With the per-hour rate that we're receiving right now, $85.01 per hour, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, outside of that, then we're being charged a fee of, um, 16 minutes possibly before to set up the bus route, five minutes at the end of it to take it down. Um, it has to be in two-hour lump sums at a time. So, for us to add in one more route, we actually have to add in two more hours at a time, because we get charged a minimum of two hours. We can't do just one hour. We can't do just a half-hour service at this point. So, in order to increase it, I think that'd be great for all of our students, and we'd love to do that. At this point in time, for us to do that and run a great service right now all the way through, next year, we just won't have the funds to sustain this increase of 12, 13% we're seeing over the last couple of years. Then again, four years from now, the service might not be able to exist at all, because we can't afford it at this new increase.
And, and if I can say one thing, I mean, it, it, it could, like, if we look at the, the, the budgets, it goes from, like, we used to pay about, um, $64,000 for this service. And it hasn't been, it has drastically increased, and we're paying about $140,000 for relatively the same service. And that, that's where we have, uh, have, like, the tough part, where five years down the road, we'll compete, we'll be paying $200,000 plus for the same amount of service, right? And, and that's, that's tough. And we're okay with, with increases, as long as they're justified, and, and there's, there's, there's reasoning for it. And we do that, we do the same thing with Welland and St. Catherine's Transit. So, it's not only Niagara Falls, it where we do this, we, we do, we've been doing this for, for eight, nine years now, right?
Right now, in a meeting that we had set up previously with Carl, Dave, um, the mayor, uh, Diradi, and Dean Iraford, uh, we set up a four-month agreement, um, till December. This was agreed upon by all parties, in order to allow us to come speak to council to yourselves, provide some of our kind of backing to where we're coming from in this matter, also from your end, and see if we can find a meet, a happy medium, so that come January through till April, we can provide a better service for the rest of this school year, and not provide the same service, which we've had since 2003 with a couple half-hour differences. And then go into a long-term agreement for a few years to provide the best service, so this type of discussion might not happen for a long period of time. We can get some growth and sustainability. Brock University just took in over 4,000 first-year students this year, when they expected about 24, 2,500. So, that's great that we have these new students coming in, and they're going to be expanding into communities such as Niagara Falls. And we're going to want this increased ridership as this happens. Um, and we want to. Um, and with that, we feel that, at the same point, we have to get something long-term and sustainable.
Just before we go to Counselor Iannone and Thompson, but, uh, Mr. Dren would like to, uh, address the comments?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, perhaps I'll address the last one first, which is the 2003 jump. Um, what happened in 2003, or beyond 2003, is they, Brock was actually subsidized by Niagara College, because there was what, what was called Interline. And we were able to put some Brock students on Niagara Fall, or, uh, yeah, Brock on Niagara College students, um, and, uh, on the buses, and utilized that service the best we could. That stopped, because, uh, Niagara College didn't want to do it anymore. Um, and so, so the subsidy at that time was Niagara College. That, that was, that was the person that was subsidizing you. But in the case of the operating cost increases, it has only gone up 5% per year. The extra has been with contract obligations. And that's what we explained to, to, uh, Busu, is that we're obligated to pay certain times, certain things, that are a direct cost associated to us, and we pass it on. It's just, it's, when, when we view Brock, they're a partner, but it's like a charter service. We charge a minimum of two hours, even though it's a one-hour run, because there's setup time, there's a, there's a walk-around, there's all kinds of things that happen, have to happen with a, with a, a driver before he puts that, that bus out. And so, therefore, what we're charging him is what it costs us to operate that service. So, there may be some increases, but they're beyond our control in the case that there are costs.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Counselor Iannone, and Counselor Thompson?
When was the last time you went back to your members and asked for an increase?
The, the, our contract, our, our referendum was set up in a way that, 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 that is sustainable all the way through, for all our, for all our transit needs. It is. It truly is, the way, the way it's set up. But it's not set up to, to, to have drastic in in, in increases.
Okay, so when I paid for my daughter's tuition, her busing is included, and it was a line item. When was the last time that line item was increased?
Uh, last year?
Every year.
Increases every year?
That's what I want to know.
Yeah, no, it increases every year, it does. Uh, and it increases because we know that we increase transit costs, so we, we, we built it into the structure. But we can't be more than unreasonable and be like, we want 30% increases every year in our transit costs. It's, it's, it's unrealistic, right? We could go up to 5% increases every year. We, we could say it's a 5% increase in our referendum, and we do that. We go, and, and if it's justifiable, we have that set up. But to do more than that, it, it's hard for us to, to justify that, right? Uh, so it's set up to be sustainable, and it works with all of our other transit, it does. And I, I do think that we do have a partnership here, that we have a responsibility to provide transit, but, but it, it is also benefiting Niagara Falls families as well, right? So, there is a mutual interest here beyond just the money, right, that, that we are, we have to provide a, 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 a quality service to the, to the families of Niagara Falls, and, and for us, for, for the students of, of Niagara Falls. So, we want to get, get the best service for you. Trust me, like, I want to, I want to improve transit, just like you guys do, as much as we can.
I would like to be able to tell you that to us, it is more than just about money.
Okay.
But with us, it's always about money. It's always what we can afford to pay for.
And, and it's the same thing for us, right? So, it's, and I get, I get that's both sides. I get, and trust me, because we look at our budgets as well, and we know that we have to be within our costs, we have to be projecting for our costs four, five years down the road, same thing as you, you guys. So, I do understand, uh, at that point of view, I really do.
Mr. Mayor, this has been quite a education for me, having sat on this committee for the last five, six months. I would like an opportunity to sit and talk to these guys, because I would really like to understand better, and maybe give you a little bit of, of feedback on what's been going on with our committee also, because our committee has students on it. We actually invited Busu to provide us with students that would help at the committee. We didn't get any, but that would have been really informative to the committee making the decisions that we're making also. But I would love, I'll give you my card, and I would love the opportunity to sit with the two of you.
I'd love to.
If that, if that would be amenable to the council.
Maybe council.
So that our committee can speak for them also.
That's a great idea. Counselor Thompson?
Well, I, I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to us, and I was looking forward to, uh, information with respect to the transit system for Brock, but, uh, what we have here is, uh, negotiating as far as what's happening. We have no report. I would like to have had some information and, uh, a, a, a report from staff to see what we're, all the information we're talking about here. Um, I, it appears to me that you should be sitting down at the, uh, table and negotiating this issue, again, coming back with a recommendation that, uh, is favorable to Brock, and that they accept in something that the council can deal directly with it. Uh, I, I don't think we're here tonight, because we don't have any background information to try to say, yes, uh, the, Brock has a, a very good logical point, our staff is, uh, 13% increase is, uh, not rational. We don't have that documentation, and I can't, uh, make any decision with respect to this. So, um, hopefully, hopefully, we can defer this to, uh, meet with our staff, to, uh, come back with a firm recommendation that the council can accept, and, uh, we can move on with what service they want, at what cost, and what, uh, really, the, uh, the, uh, transit system and the people who are riding the transit system, uh, break even, and nobody is being treated unfairly. So, I'd make a motion, we, uh, refer that, and, uh, I know Counselor Iannone would like to, uh, sit down with just the two young Brock students. I would suggest that it should be a legitimate committee.
I must say nothing.
Yeah, good call. Uh, actually, just before we move on, uh, counselor, or counselor, the clerk would like to comment.
Yeah, um, in reference to what Counselor Thompson said, you're right. I mean, we didn't expect you to make any decisions tonight. In fact, I stood up on, uh, August 15th, when the contract was here, and I advised council at that time that the, uh, that the recommendation had been amended in that report to, uh, change the length of term of the contract for four months, and that the gentleman would be coming at this meeting to speak to council. And we fully anticipated that you would then refer this to staff, and staff would sit down with them to see what can be resolved in time for January. So, that's exactly what our thinking was.
Okay, we've got Counselor Morocco, and then Counselor Gates?
I'm good.
Oh, you're good? Okay, Counselor Gates?
Thanks very much, Mayor Diradi. Uh, thanks for coming, because I think the most important thing is have dialogue with the council, I, and with the city, because it is important to make sure that, uh, we get our, our students that live in Niagara Falls to the university. Uh, obviously, that's important. And I also understand what your concern is. When I take a look at this, and I see it's 27% increase in two years, you guys are saying, what's going on, and well, how's this happening? So, I understand exactly where you're going. But I think, um, similar to what, uh, Counselor Iannone talked about, and, and Carl, I believe that, uh, not only should you sit down maybe with, uh, the chair of that committee, but maybe either one of these guys should sit on the committee, uh, so that you'd understand exactly what the city's up against on the cost structure, and I think that would be very, uh, good. And I actually thought, all the stakeholders, uh, hopefully, we're going to get on the committee. But I think if one of you guys would said, sit on the committee, I know, uh, they talked about trying to get someone that rides it on the committee, and they weren't successful. Uh, but as heads of the union, uh, I think, and representing, uh, you know, the 17,000 or 18,000 people that are at Brock University, I think it'd be important for you to sit down on this committee, because I can understand, when you see a 27, or a 27% increase in two years, you guys are going, what's going on here? So, I understand that. But I appreciate you coming to council, uh, talking to us. Uh, hopefully, we can, uh, get together and get a resolve for the benefit, not only of the, of the two guys standing here, but for, for the students that live in, the students that live in Niagara Falls, because that's the most important thing.
Was it Brock, Brock Union, or Brock University Student Union?
Uh, Student Union.
Which I just wanted to be clear, I wasn't sure. Uh, Counselor Iannone?
To Counselor Gates, I have, I don't know, 15 people on that committee, and they'll be able to tell you, I have asked every meeting why we don't have a Busu representative on it, and I was told we contacted Busu, and Busu did not contact us back to put a representative on that committee. So, I have endlessly tried.
Well, they're here today, so I think...
I see that.
Happy to.
Yeah. So, uh, we've got a motion by Counselor Thompson to, uh, come back with a staff report, and, uh, for Counselor Iannone to have a little sit-down with the two young guys from Brock. Is that the motion? Do we have a second, or?
On the side.
Counsel, pardon me?
On the side.
That sounds so long.
Seconded by Counselor Morocco, or do you want to be at the meeting too? Or she just want to be, okay, well, second by Counselor Morocco. All right, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, first up, under the, uh, under the planning meeting, uh, we've got, um, PD 2011-63, Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, um, Mr. Mayor, we were, uh, had a brief discussion before, and I understand there are numerous people here from the, uh, Stanford Volunteer Firemen tonight. Uh, they, uh, obviously have an issue that is, uh, very important to them. Uh, I've been having discussions and dialogue, as you have, over the past, uh, many weeks, and, uh, if there's an opportunity to, uh, I don't know what your plan was to hear them, but, uh, I would suggest that, uh, at the start of the planning meeting would be appropriate, and, uh, maybe we could deal with this issue, uh, quickly. I think...[1725.01] and, uh, maybe we could deal with this issue, uh, quickly, I think.
Why don't you bring a motion forward, and we'll, we'll do this?
I would move that, uh, the Stanford Center Volunteer Firemen be given the opportunity to make a presentation, and we make a, uh, a decision with respect to their project, uh, out in the, uh, beautiful north end of the city that they maintain and have for many, many years.
Okay, we've got motion by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Morocco, to, uh, bring the mo, the, this issue forward now. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. So do we have a spokesperson for the SEVFA that would like to address the, the council? Okay?
Yes, sir.
Right, that'd be great, why don't you step forward, and, uh, for the record, if you could state your name and address?
Uh, my name is Nick Loris, I'm president of the Stanford Center Volunteer Firemen Association, and, um, my, uh, address is forty-four sixty-five Drummer Road, Niagara Falls. We, uh, we submitted a letter to, uh, your worship regarding that we're looking for support for the opportunity to operate our clubhouse in such a manner that we can, uh, raise monies to continue the operations of our park. Uh, we've, in the past, uh, had carnivals and bingos, which of course subsequently does not raise enough money to the operation of our parks. We're presently, um, uh, uh, we presently do not have a landscaper anymore that we used to have, because we can't afford it anymore. So we're looking for, uh, uh, support from council to allow us to operate the, uh, the clubhouse in such a manner where we can, uh, raise funds for the operation of our, uh, park. We've had, uh, letters from the planning department, uh, to the NEC, and to ourselves, uh, um, limiting the amount of people that could even, uh, enter our, uh, establishment. And we're looking for that also to be, uh, raised to what it's, uh, designed for, which is three hundred and fifty people, and the activities that we can have, not to be limited to strictly, uh, holding, uh, our own personal meetings there, but to have other functions operate there that we can, uh, raise money for the operation of the park.
Okay, that's great, thank you very much. We've got, um, Counselor Peterangelo, Counselor Thompson?
Just the first question, and I thank Mr. Loris for coming, but, uh, did we receive this letter?
Uh, yes, we received the letter on the-
Did we receive it?
Sixteenth. Uh, this should have been circulated to all of council.
No.
Okay.
No, uh, the mayor's office received the letter, and we advised, Mr. Loris was advised by the mayor's office that it would come to a future meeting. We didn't say it would come to the next meeting. And we also feel as staff that there should be a staff report on this matter.
Okay.
Your worship, I apologize, I have no knowledge of that.
Yeah, and you know what I apologize to, I understand, I thought the letter was circulated, uh, through our, um, through the city's, uh, administration. But, uh, but it, it wasn't, I guess, we know that now, and we apologize for that. But, uh, but everybody's here in the room, if, if there's any questions, we can get things sorted out. Uh, Counselor Thompson?
Yes, uh, nor did I receive the letter, but I have had numerous discussions and dialogue with, uh, Mr. Loris. And I think it's a very simple situation. Uh, and I do agree that, uh, there should be a formal report back to council, so everybody is, uh, has the same information, and it's a, a very simple question. The Niagara Escarpment Commission, uh, is very restrictive in what they permit in the, uh, escarpment area. And, uh, of course, when they receive a planning comment from a municipality, uh, that certainly gives them the opportunity to be severely restrictive. And what they're attempting to do is have a facility, uh, which is well under construction, uh, at this point, or?
Yes, it is.
Yeah. And, uh, what they wanna be able to do is to maintain their park by having events other than the membership, uh, uh, meeting there, and it's a very simple situation. So if they get a very positive response from this council, uh, to the planning director to send that on to the escarpment commission, then that is gonna give them the opportunity to operate and function and maintain, uh, the park in, uh, uh, perpetuity, hopefully. So, uh, I would, uh, be happy to move, and I didn't know what was gonna happen tonight. I knew they were here, but I didn't know, it wasn't on the agenda. So, uh, I would move that, uh, we refer this matter to our staff to sit down and try to finalize this issue, so that they can get on with their, uh, finishing of the construction and, uh, the, uh, maintenance, uh, uh, of their operation, uh, through the operation of this facility, uh, which is similar to Club Italia, similar to, uh, the Greek Cultural Center, and all of, the Optimist Club, and all of the rest of them. So, uh, I don't think they're asking for something that's unique, other than the fact that it's in the escarpment, uh, area, and give somebody else the, uh, jurisdiction over that. And I think we have to be receptive to try to help them, and I would move we ask for a suitable report after negotiations with the group.
Okay, we've got a motion by Counselor Thompson, and seconded by Counselor Morocco. Do you wanna speak to that too, Counselor?
Your worship, uh, I can support that, I just, uh, just like everyone else here, we don't have enough information, so I think it's great that, uh, we postpone this and, uh, refer back to staff to give us that information and move forward, so that's why I'll support it, thank you.
Also, it should be noted that this did go before the Niagara Escarpment Commission last week, and they did vote to defer it to their next meeting, uh, in October. Uh, because they, I guess there was a little bit of confusion, they sent the letter and it didn't go to, to you guys, it was the wrong address or something, and, uh, anyway, we do have a little bit of time, not a lot of time, so our, our objective should be that the October third meeting, hopefully we can get that on the agenda for then with the reports, we can deal with it before it goes, before the Niagara Escarpment Commission. Uh, Counselor Peterangelo?
Yeah, your worship, and all I was gonna say is that I can't see council not being very supportive of the Stanford Center Volunteers, and, you know, and their ability to raise funds in order to continue the good work that they do. And hopefully, we can get it on the agenda before the Niagara Escarpment Commission deals with it, so that they can see what our decision is, and hopefully we can be in support.
I think that's really important. Counselor Maves?
I, your worship, I have a, uh, I'm, I suppose I have a conflict in that my, uh, my property is in close proximity to the, uh, to the Fireman's Park, and I, I'm probably gonna have to declare a, a conflict on, on any vote on this matter.
Okay, Counselor Gates?
Wayne, just real quick, uh, do we know when the Niagara Escarpment meeting is? Because to Wayne's point, there may be, I, I need to get this to him, so that they know the council is supporting him in principle on what they wanna do here. Uh, and it'd probably be helpful if this council made a decision on that. I, I appreciate we should get a staff report, uh, but I don't think there's anybody around this table that's not gonna support your, uh, your group or what you're trying to do. Uh, we all understand how important it is, but to put a little bit of pressure on them. Do we have any idea when the meeting is, I guess that would be my concern? I mean, if, if it's after October third, then it's great, but if it's not, where are we at?
Uh, yeah, we'll ask our solicitor to comment.
Well, I would, uh, I suggest a, perhaps a superior way of dealing with it would be just simply that, uh, if, if it's before the next council meeting, uh, that, that I trot down there and tell them that I want it deferred, on behalf of the council, we want it deferred, and tell you've had a chance to hear from the council, seeing as it's in their jurisdiction. 'Cause that would give council the opportunity to have a proper report before they were, for, uh, they'd actually formally taken a step. So if, if we need to, uh, then I'd go. How does that sound, is that?
That's fair. Well, I'm asking council for that instruction. Yep. Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, I would include that as part of the motion, but also, uh, I don't see this as a huge issue, uh, planning-wise. And if somebody can get a report, uh, sent out to us, uh, email in the next, uh, three or four days, and we can respond, uh, even by, uh, uh, phone or email in the next week or so, just to make sure that we don't have a problem. But I would make the motion, we include that, but also add, uh, the opportunity for a quick response to council. This is not a huge planning issue in my mind.
Okay. Counselor Wayne?
I'm just curious about what was the staff comment that's, uh, so problematic? And, you know, what's the rationale behind it?
Well, there was, you know, vetting the whole thing before staff, for it, staff had suggested limitations on the size and scope of, and nature of the building. Uh, and the club, you know, wants to go in a direction where they can utilize certain things without getting, if you want the specifics, we can, we can drag it out tonight, I mean, Alex is here. But, um, but basically, suggestions were made through planning that there should be certain limitations, and the club, uh, you know, doesn't wanna go down that route. And, uh, so a letter's been sent from our staff to the Niagara Escarpment Commission stating these. And so now the question is, if this council wants to take a, an official position contrary to that, the objective is to get it in before the next Niagara Escarpment Commission meeting, so that they can have that in front of them before they make any kind of final decision.
Was there some sort of planning rationale behind the comments that?
Well, if you want me to-
Get Alex.
Alex, okay, we'll get Mr. Hrlavich, maybe you can, might as well comment, 'cause I'm not the planner.
Yes, your worship, uh, to the, uh, counselor. The, uh, you know, the planning department found that the building that the, uh, Stanford Volunteer Firefighters Association was constructing was twice as big and twice as high, well, it was two stories instead of one story, um, from what they had got approvals for, from NEC, they actually had a stop work order. When we reviewed, so they applied to revamp their application to NEC. When we reviewed, reviewed that application, it wasn't a clubhouse any longer, it was an assembly hall. And those were our comments to the Escarpment Commission, and we suggested that if it was indeed supposed to be a clubhouse, then it should be, uh, limited in size, in terms of number of people. And so that's what basically Mr. Loris is, uh, stating, that they don't wish to use it as a clubhouse, they wish to use it as all sorts of functions. And quite honestly, at this point, until we sit down with them, I won't know what kind of traffic we're expecting, the frequency of use, uh, and those types of things that could have an impact. But those would be the things we'd bring back to council. And basically, council would comment to the NEC, which is the approval body. And so the NEC will ultimately make the decision.
And answer your question, Counselor?
Yes.
Okay, Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, so that, that, my motion basically stands, and, uh, and, and applause for doing such a great job making it bigger.
Okay, and we'll ask the clerk to comment?
Doesn't look like their next meeting's till the middle of October, so we shouldn't have a problem.
Okay, that's great. Yes, Nick?
Yeah, the, uh, the meeting's October twentieth with the NEC. They would like comments back to them by October twelfth, so they can prepare, prepare their reports to the, uh, to their commission. And their reports will be based on the city's recommendation.
Okay, well, our meeting's October the third, so if you gentlemen wanna return, uh, at that time, we'll have our staff report, we'll have council's comments, and then we'll make a final decision, uh, how this, this council wants to see things develop. Does that cover you for now?
Yep.
All right, well, thanks for, oh, we have to call the motions, we got a motion by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Morocco. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous, with one, uh, conflict declared. Thanks very much, gentlemen, thank you. Okay, moving on, uh, back to planning matter, PD two thousand eleven dash sixty-three, appeal of the Committee of Adjustment decision, uh, consent application B two thousand eleven dash zero one six. Um, we've, I'm gonna ask the, uh, our planner to speak, but Counselor Thompson, did you wanna comment on this?
Um, I'll give him a chance.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Hrlavich?
Uh, yes, your worship, there's a report before you tonight. Uh, on August the thirtieth, the Committee of Adjustment granted a, uh, a severance to allow a property, uh, to be, uh, subdivided, so that there would be a three-acre parcel for a rural residential, uh, lot, and, uh, retain thirteen, or fourteen point three acres, uh, as another rural residential lot. Uh, it's contrary to the city's official plan, region's policy plan, and the provincial policy statements. Uh, so staff is recommending that we proceed to the Ontario Municipal Board, and we're seeking your direction on that.
Okay, Counselor Thompson?
Um, is, I don't know whether Mr. Sinclair is there to speak. I, I wanna make sure he gets paid tonight, but, uh, I don't wanna delay this either. I, uh, I guess when you've been around here, well, a lot of years, uh, you've had a lot of experience with, uh, different, uh, items and different situations. And in fact, I have been intimately involved with this particular concession, uh, going back, uh, with my days at the Health Department, and then, uh, being here at City Hall. So I was actively involved when, uh, the nine brothers and sisters came together and acquired, uh, a large piece of property, uh, divided it into, uh, ten-acre parcels, and really made a family community out of it, uh, uh, many years ago. And it's been consistent, uh, like that, uh, ever since. And I, uh, uh, well, I guess we'll get into, uh, the planning report a little, uh, later regarding the creation of, uh, lots. And I think the, the report was actually excellent, and really clarified, sometimes we get excited and agitated when we see, uh, an infilling lot, and the planning people come in and say, no, this doesn't fit, it's good agricultural property, it's gonna interfere with agriculture. Well, that's their job, and that's what all of the policies say. So really, in the report that's coming up, uh, the only way to control that is with the status quo. Uh, we deal with them on an individual basis. So here you have a, a piece of property that has been owned, uh, by all of the family, uh, in this area. This one particular lot by, um, Benny Peterangelo, and, uh, he has severed off a small piece for his daughter on one side, and wants to continue and do the same thing for the son on the other side. All the family, nobody else adversely affected. Uh, remote chance that, uh, there could be in the next twenty years, any requests for services, nor do they need them. They all have, uh, ample property for their private sewage disposal systems, and, uh, I can't see why we would treat this any different than all of the other individual ones we've approved in the past many months, and, uh, and, and me for many years, uh, in these areas. It's an infilling situation, it could not be used for agricultural self-sustaining, uh, uh, issues. So, uh, as a result, I would move that, uh, we not object to the Ontario Municipal Board, uh, with this application.
Okay, so withdrawn, do we have a current appeal already, uh, registered, Alex?
The, uh, the appeal is in our office, but it hasn't been submitted yet, because we, uh, the time is not up. So we wouldn't, we would just not send it.
We have motion, uh, to not appeal the, or, the decision of the Committee of Adjustment, seconded by Counselor Ianone. Is there any further discussion on this issue? Counselor Wayne?
I'm going to vote against the motion, um, I've, my, to be consistent really with, uh, how I always vote on these. The, the way I look at it is, if it's contrary to our official plan, the regional policy plan, and the provincial policy statements, and, you know, the law is the law, and I've read this in conjunction with the report that we're going to be considering a bit later tonight on the cre, creation of residential, um, lots in agricultural areas. And, uh, it talks in that second report about the trend toward consolidated holding, consolidating holdings, agricultural holdings, and how much, um, the, uh, the, this agricultural area, or industry in our area has increased in recent years, and it's actually a two-point-four billion-dollar industry regionally now. Um, there, you know, there's different ways things can be done, it, I, I know this isn't one where it's a surplus farm dwelling, but, uh, in those cases, the lands that aren't going to be used for residential purpose are severed and, uh, used to rezon for agricultural purposes only. I mean, this, we're talking a large lot here, I'm advised it's about three acres. You know, some of it could be severed and zoned for agricultural purposes only, and, uh, not, uh, go to residential use. I'm just concerned about the bigger picture, and that is why I consistently support staff on this, is I think it is really important to preserve our agricultural areas. And, no, you can't grow tender fruit or, uh, you know, garden variety crops on there, but there are crops that grow there, and I understand there is certain crops that actually thrive in that kind of soil, and I just don't think we should be undermining our agricultural capacity when the trend in the industry is going the other way.
Any other comments? We'll call the motion, all those in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay, it's approved. Withdrawal, you still wanna speak, Wayne? Do you wanna talk, is that of it?
Mr. Hrlavich was very easy on me compared to the region. You know, what he's saying is quite correct, but there is extenuating circumstances, I think, in this particular case, and a lot of cases where you have a lot of houses that are in infilling situation. The problem that I, that I've had, and you people have really been supportive, and I really, really thank you for doing it, you've been fantastic, and writing, and Dean Nierfied writes a very good letter to the region asking them to withdraw their appeal. And, uh, but it's not really successful. The trouble is, they, uh, they really put me through the mill. They've always, I've always been successful in having it, 'cause, uh, uh, a guy by the name of Deo Daddy was there the, the last time, and it really helped, uh, he was a great help to me. But, you know, it's really unfair, 'cause I've gotta sort of prepare for it, I've gotta do, uh, uh, letters to all of the seventeen or eighteen people on the Public Works, which he's on. But he was in China, unfortunately, the one I had last week, went through, by the way. It was a different situation. But if you could, you could write, if you'd write to maybe, uh, the chairman, uh, the, the Regional Chairman Burrows, or something like that, if he got a copy of the letter. Because I have to prepare for it, and then I have to go to the region, it's costly to my client, and I don't, I really don't wanna charge him that, if I can avoid it. If, if you could, if you could do something like that, it'd really be helpful.
Okay, our solicitor's, uh, got his hand up, he, uh, was open to comment on this?
Ultimately, the policies that are governing all these matters are driven by the province. And the whole reason why the region goes after Mr. Sinclair and his clients with such unbridled enthusiasm is because the province tells them to do that. Reason why they do that is they anticipate that the servicing costs of these endeavors ultimately will be vast. The party that fought with us when we tried to get our, our rural ser, our policies, uh, liberalized and got clobbered at the Divisional Court was not any of the feel-good, um, sort of ministries, it was actually Infrastructure Ontario. They were doing it for reasons of sheer dollars, they were not- They were not out there to defend goldfish. So I, I think that there's two things at work here. One is, the province is extremely motivated to oppose these things, because they think ultimately they're going to cost a lot of money. And historically, I've got to say that I've been involved in three incidents where such things did cost a lot of money. In any event, if council wishes to assist in trying to liberalize the situation, there's a provincial election on right now, and it might be more effective to contact the province and its representatives, or predictably the ones who are running for office, than to try to get the regional staff to defy the provincial edicts. So the provincial edicts need to be revised in order for the whole situation to be liberalized.
Okay, well, what was that word you used?
Provincial edict. They call, they call them policies, but the way they administer them is something along the lines of the way Stalin dealt with his policies. So, you know, they don't regard them with a great deal of flexibility. Or, I mean, there are criminal statutes that seem to be more easily interpreted than some of these provincial policies, if, when you're dealing with the provincial civil service. So I can see where Mr. St, some of the frustration Mr. Sinclair's experiencing.
I just simply say, I think with the end of the election, that's, I don't think any of the, if you contact the minister, he's not going to be interested in doing anything, especially with the election. He's probably kind of seen a realist thing that they do.
He could be, well...
So I don't think, I don't think you're going to be able to do this.
Well, he could be, well, the thing is, you could force him to actually make an election issue. That's, that's the thing. Like, so far, this issue has not been raised at all.
Probably too late for that.
Are you asking us, Mr. Sinclair, basically to send a letter to the chair, as opposed to staff? Is that what you're asking us to do?
Because staff, it doesn't seem to work.
Right, so send it to the chair and council at the region?
The chair and both of you, dude, both of you agree.
To both? Okay.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, councillor Thompson?
Yes, I meant to include that in my motion, so, but I would include anybody who has anything to do with it. And also a blind copy to you, so that you would be aware of what's going on in the council.
And give it to my cousin? Okay, so we've got a...
You could be ready for that.
Yeah, yeah, I'll be ready. Okay, we have a friendly, an amendment to his own motion. Councillor Ayononi, there was just an amendment to the last motion.
It's not even on.
No, no, it's still on, and...
You don't need to do an amendment.
No? Okay, so anyway, basic, okay, clerk tells me you don't need to do an amendment. So it's the same motion with the addition that the letter's gonna go to the chair and council in addition to staff, and I'll be BCC'd on it. All right, any other follow-up comment before I call the motion? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, one noted opposed. All right.
Thanks very much.
All right, thanks very much. Okay, next up is PD 2011-29, Creation of Residential Lots in Agricultural Areas. And I'll call on Mr. Hrlavich to comment. I'm sorry? Oh, hold on, I might have missed one. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, PD 2011-64, Glenholm Road Allowance Request for Grant. Ask Mr. Hrlavich if you would address this one.
Yes, your worship, the report before you involves a request from Habitat for the Humanities. Involves two properties in the city of Niagara Falls. One involves the Glenholm Road Allowance. It's a stub-end road allowance running north from Bellevue Avenue in the, in the city. Habitat for Humanities looking to have that property gifted to them, along with seeking a grant for a number of services and permits that would be, the cost of permits that would be required. And then the second property is a property on McCray Avenue, or Street, rather, that Habitat owns, and they're seeking a number of exemptions from the cost of permits associated with those properties. Staff is recommending that the lot on Glenholm be offered for sale on the open market, and that the request for grants by Habitat for Humanities be referred to the budget process.
Okay, well, you're, are you suggesting, excuse me, Mr. Hrlavich, that either/or? So either we go into the open market, or if we choose not to, that we refer to the budget process? Is that what you're suggesting?
Basically, we're recommending that the lot be referred to the open market. If Habitat is successful, then the request for the exemption on fees would be considered as part of the budget process, and then they have the property they already own on McCray, which those requests for fees should be referred to the budget process.
Okay, I understand, I understand. Okay, so we have a motion by councillor Ayononi for the recommendations. And by the way, we do have Alistair Davis from Habitat for Humanity. He is here tonight if we have any questions or have any comments. So we have a motion from councillor Ayononi. Dick, did you want to hear from Alistair? Yep, councillor Gates?
Yeah, I think that would be fair, if he can come up and speak and kind of let us know what you're trying to do here in Niagara Falls, if that's okay with everybody, please.
What's that? Yep, he's spoken. Okay, did you, did you want to, is there anything you wanted to add to the report? Alistair?
Um, he hasn't spoken since I was elected councillor, that I'm aware of. I've only been here for nine, 10 months, but I don't believe he's spoken.
Okay, maybe the clerk, did you want to comment?
Yeah, just in fairness to councillor Gates, he's correct. This issue has been to council on a number of occasions over the last council term. You'll recall that originally this property was going to be granted to the Catholic School Board and the Niagara Regional Housing. You made that approval back in April 2009, I believe. That project fell through. There's been many other proposals related to the property. Staff has always been consistent recommending that we sell the property. We feel that's our professional responsibility, is to tell you to sell the property. Obviously, there's good rationale, though, obviously for Habitat for Humanity as well. They're obviously a very good organization in our community, but in fairness to councillor Gates, he wasn't around when these issues came up before.
Okay, Alistair, welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much, and I appreciate the, the ongoing and continuing work on behalf of council and staff in supporting the work of Habitat for Humanity. We have a unique program in which we're able to break the cycle of poverty through affordable homeownership. To be very clear, in terms of us requesting that this lot be gifted to Habitat, is that everything we receive, and every dollar that ever comes into Habitat, stays within our housing movement, right here in Niagara. We actually sell the home to the family that is qualified to become the new homeowner. And that process really continues a perpetual motion of the funds and resources that we have. Specifically this property, we plan to be, and hopeful of being able to have DSPN, District School Board of Niagara, to be our home build champions. And we've been doing this for a number of years throughout the region, and in being able to do this, we were able to involve 20 students in each of our projects, which they're able to enter into their apprenticeship program, which is fantastic for their careers, and also continues employment and retention of our youth, and build strong communities in our, in our economy. We've got a proven track record of building 34 homes in Niagara. We just started home number 35 last week in Welland, and we're able to break that cycle of poverty. And we would, we want to start our next build program right here in Niagara Falls in February, in a relationship we have with the school board, and also then to be able to plan in 2013 to build on the lot in question, which is on Bellevue. And really to showcase this property, we are making a bid for, and very optimistic of winning the 2013 National Habitat Conference to hold it here. And we'd like to showcase to Canada and to elsewhere in North America, as we'll be inviting guests from United States and elsewhere, that we are in fact building a home in this great city, and building it with the students, and students from Niagara Falls. Of course, the great benefactors, in addition to the students and the community, are the families that will become new homeowners, and in particular, what I look at is I don't count the builds I think about, and I count the children that are in these homes. So I appreciate your support and interest in what Habitat does. The Governor General, David Johnson, just in the last few days, has made a statement that affordable housing is in great demand across Canada, and he specifically talks about Habitat for Humanity, and the fact that he hopes that we will continue to see more arrangements where Habitat will be receiving land from all levels of government, and particularly in local municipalities, to show, to show and support the capable effectiveness that Habitat has, and how we can convert the resource of land that's provided to us in a building and a home for a family to change their lives forever, and to further grow your community.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
That's great. So we have a motion by councillor Ayononi to move the recommendation. Councillor Gates?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a few comments around...
Did you want to second the motion?
No, I'm not seconding the motion, I wanted to...
Okay.
...ask questions to the presenter, she...
Yep, go ahead.
Whatever your, whatever your wishes are. First of all, once again, thanks, thanks for coming. Maybe you could help me out here on how many communities would Habitat for Humanity have in the Niagara region that you've built homes in?
We have completed homes in Fort Erie, Thorold, Port Colburn, Welland, St. Catharines, Grimsby. And we built a house here about 10 years ago.
So we, we have done this once before in Niagara Falls, because obviously the work that you do is incredible. Quite, you know, I, I want to tell you that, but I think what we have to really realize here in Niagara Falls, that we do have one of the lowest median incomes in the province, without a doubt. We have some of the highest unemployment in the country, and certainly in the province of Ontario. There is a real need for affordable housing here in Niagara Falls. I think, I think that's some of the things that we should be taking a look at, rather than pushing this off six or eight months. The fact that you're going to partner with students, there's a couple of things that happen there that gives them some of the work experience that's needed, as they try to move into some of these trades jobs that may, may come up, but it also opens up their eyes to working in the community, taking care of people that are less fortunate, maybe themselves, or maybe they're part of that as well. And so the work that you do is incredible, and the fact that you're looking at bringing the 20th anniversary here in 2013, you imagine what that would mean as far as publicity around Habitat right across the country, with the fact that we'd have their delegates here, we'd have our students doing the work right here in Niagara Falls. I would like us to see us move forward with this, and try and find a way to get one of these homes built right here in our community, rather than push it out into budget time. I appreciate the work that you do, right across the region. You're doing incredible work, and I'm hoping that Niagara Falls will be part of that family as well. Not 10 years back, starting now, okay? So thanks very much for coming, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, councillor Gates, councillor Morocco?
Mayor Deodaddy, I'll second the motion, because I think it's important. They do a wonderful job, but at the same time, we also have to be very cautious of our budget as well, which this money really isn't going to be allocated, and I think that we're going to be seeing our, a little bit of our budget in the next little while, I believe, from staff. So I'm very eager to support this and put this on, on our books, and hopefully that we, as council, look at this during our budget negotiations, because I think it is very crucial. And yes, we've seen that from FCM and AMO, that the importance of affordable housing is crucial to the success of a community, so definitely support your project, so, thank you.
I think we'd all like to see a showcase home being built right here in Niagara Falls. Is there any further discussion before we call the vote? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, PD 2011-29, Creation of Residential Lots in Agricultural Areas. And I'll ask Mr. Hrlavich if you could address this one, please?
Yes, your worship, the report before you tonight, council had requested earlier this year that staff investigate the possibility of creating rural residential lots in agricultural areas. Staff investigated three possible areas. One was using settlement criteria, another was estate residential policies, and the third was infilling policies. Under the settlement area criteria that's set up by the province, they contain specific provisions as to what actually includes a settlement area, and in Niagara Falls, that's actually only the urban area of the city, so there wouldn't be a basis for creating severances in the rural area using settlement criteria. We also looked at hamlets. Unfortunately, hamlets, again, are specifically identified as being a mixed kind of development, and so again, they're not identified in the city's official plan or the region's policy plan, so we didn't see those as being an opportunity for council to create residential severances in the rural areas. We looked at estate residential policies. The region does permit estate residential within the rural designation, so we would have to redesignate a portion of the city's lands as rural, and develop policies for that. However, in taking a look at our past experience with that, the city had actually done a $30,000 study for a portion of Willoughby. We worked with the province and the region to bring that forward, and after considerable effort, the province actually appealed our amendments, that is, both the city and region, regional amendments, to the Ontario Municipal Board. There's a $100,000 three-week hearing, and we ultimately lost that effort. So it'd be difficult for us to recommend moving forward again on a $100,000-plus effort to try and secure in Kroland what we couldn't secure in Willoughby. We looked at infill policies. The province used to allow infill severances between existing houses. The provincial policy statement was changed, and the only severances that are allowed now are surplus farm dwellings. However, we do have infill policies that are prepared. We could bring those back, with the hope that regional council might approve those, although we really feel that regional staff would likely not support such a move. In looking at what other opportunities were out there, we did a survey of lots in the Willoughby and Kroland area that were under four hectares in size, and we found that there were actually somewhere between 150 to 165 lots. And if those were all developed with houses at our current rate of houses that are built in the non-urban area, that would be about a 24-year supply of housing. So we, we looked at some options that might be available for council. By maintaining the status quo, it's something that councillor Thompson referred to a moment ago, and that is that on an individual site-by-site basis, council could review that, determine whether or not, if a severance is granted, whether or not to appeal that to the Ontario Municipal Board. If there are no appeals, and the lot is granted, it's not really a planning program, but it would allow for some occasional infill of lots out in the rural area. The, we can make our attempt, as I suggested, to submit infill policies to the region. There's really not a great deal of staff time involved in this, because we do have the policies prepared. There's not a huge amount of financial resources that would be involved either, so we could put that together and bring that back to a future council meeting. And then lastly would be to uphold the policies and take a much stricter view, which is not allowing ever, any severances following basically what our official plan, the region's policy plan, and the provincial policy statement does. The solicitor points out in this report that the practice of granting consents that are not, that are not supported by the policies are contrary to law, and it's really not a sustainable practice. The, so therefore, we're basically bringing this report to your attention, attentions, excuse me, with, you know, the request that you provide us with some direction as to which direction you might like to go.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any, yeah, councillor Thompson?
Yeah, I referred to it earlier. I think the staff have done a very commendable job on preparing this document, and very clearly indicates what our options are, what the history has been in the past. We've attempted to have some kind of consideration, and in fact, it's mentioned in the report around the Legends Golf Course, in conjunction with the Niagara Parks Commission, a great deal of effort, funds, and staff time put forward to see if that was acceptable, and it came back loud and clear that the province does not condone this, the regional policies don't, nor do our own. So I think the suggestions very clearly indicate that you really don't have any choice in these matters, and therefore, the status quo, when there is an infilling situation, we can deal with it through the Committee of Adjustment. If it's supported there, we can call on Mr. Sinclair to come in and, and do his part, and then the mayor... in and do his part. And then the mayor follow through in the final analysis. A little bit of humor there, but I think without exception, there are legitimate reasons why people like to live in the rural area. There are legitimate reasons why they like to have their family adjacent to them. And there are legitimate reasons why a small piece of property with development on both sides, which is not going to interfere with agriculture and agricultural expansion. And therefore, I think I support personally the status quo suggestion and also to compliment the staff for the report that they prepared and apologize for all of the aggravation that we give them on a regular basis with respect to these situations. And if it needs a motion to that effect, after councillor Wing has made her comment, I will make the motion.
Okay, thank you. We got the solicitor? Yes, Mr. Beeman?
Just like to point out to council that maintaining the status quo cumulatively has eventually... So there are two effects I think will be noticed. One is sooner or later, the province is going to notice what we're up to, and they'll probably wade in here. And I don't know whether they'll go so far as to issue a ministerial order, which basically takes away the city's planning powers over a particular area of the municipality and makes the staff report directly to the minister, which has happened. Richmond Hill is one place I know that happened. But that's a possibility. But I think the more serious consequence that council should be prepared for is in cases where I have to defend council's action in front of the board. The strategy of my opponent will be to point out that council doesn't follow its own official plan with respect to these severances. And if that person's clever enough, then they'll be wondering why I'm there advancing other policies which do support what council did in the case that I put him before the board. Because what essentially their argument will be, well, the policies didn't matter there, so why the hell do they matter here? So it's an exposure that I just have to draw to council's attention. Council are big people. They're little guys. You guys sit in the big chairs and you can decide how you want to go. I just have to warn you, that's a possibility of a risk that's being taken in this. The third thing that I have been up against in areas where there have been large numbers of rural severances, quite apart from the fact that there's quite a number of studies that show that these things cost municipalities a lot of money compared to the tax revenue they generate, is that eventually you get into these situations where the ministry of health takes it upon themselves to order the municipality to install services. And those things can be very expensive. I've been through two in the region of Hamilton Wentworth, and they were... There are two that I was actually involved with. They were expensive, and two that I know of, which I was at the tail end of cleaning up. And there were significant costs. Now granted, they were at the regional level, so that might not trouble this council, but it certainly was a lot of money and aggravation and expropriations and stuff to get all this stuff in place. I mean, I made lots of money. I was a private practice and stuff. But it's something to watch for, particularly as I understand in the history of this, and I think councillor Thompson has some experience in the field in this particular thing, but I understand that the soils in these areas are particularly impermeable. And so cumulatively, you can have an effect if you grant a number of these severances in lots that are under the size that is specified in the official plan.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Yes, first of all, I am not aware of any orders that have been issued by the medical officer in this particular area in the last 45 years. So I don't... And I can't think of any. If you go back 30 years, I think we did have a problem with the Mulhearn Woodbine area that had to be sewed because of the small lots and sewage problems from the individual sewage systems. But the health department doesn't approve any lots now unless they do percolation tests, they determine the soil. And there are no septic systems now that go into the ground. They're all above-ground systems, totally different. And I can't really think of myself right now, any area that would be petitioning for sewers of a small hamlet simple. There's a situation in Camden, I think, where the only one I can think of, and maybe in the Waynefleet area, but certainly nothing within the parameters of the city. So I don't think we're doing something that is going to put us in jeopardy, certainly in the distant future.
Okay, councillor Way?
Yes, contrary to councillor Thompson, my personal preference is option C, that we uphold the existing policy regime that protects agricultural lands for farming. As staff point out, our current practice is contrary to law. The Planning Act forbids us from doing what we've been doing, which is passing bylaws which don't conform to our own official plan. There's some warnings from staff about what we've been doing with the land division can create premature demand for a number of things. And one of them is road and drainage works due to increased traffic and surface runoff. And you know, there could be a cumulative effect where nobody deliberately comes forward to ask for these things, but it becomes needed, especially when you're dealing with areas where the soil is relatively impermeable. The other big thing is what staff are talking about, where the farms in that Willoughby-Croland area have been expanding in size and consolidating in ownership. We have an industry which is really starting to show some good, solid signs of life again, and we don't want to work against that and do things that are going to lead to potential land use conflicts. And what they're saying is that by upholding present policy regime, our focus will be on how agriculture plays an important role in the economy of the city and region. And that's where I want to see the focus for the agricultural areas that we have left. And unfortunately, a lot of our best lands have been paved over long ago. They're now underneath subdivisions, but we still have a lot of good agricultural land. And I believe it's important to protect it and to protect that industry and encourage it to grow and become stronger than it already is. And so my preference is very different.
Thank you. Any other comments on the report? You have councillor Gates?
Has there been a motion put forward?
Not yet.
Okay. So I wasn't sure if Wayne had put a motion forward.
Yes.
I don't disagree with the comments of councillor Wing at all with respect to preservation of agricultural lands. I think we're talking about a few individual infilling lot severances that are approved by the committee of adjustment. Some are not approved by the committee of adjustment, and that gives us that flexibility rather than being held strong and tight to one policy that doesn't give this council any flexibility regardless of the circumstances. So I would make a motion that we adopt the status quo situation.
Okay, we have a motion for option A, status quo. Councillor Morocco? Okay.
Mayor Diodati, I'll support that. And I have to say that I also support councillor Wing too in preserving agriculture. I think we have here is not one size fits all. And we saw that tonight. This land is not farable and never will be. And there's a family that have been there for years and years. So I think that was a totally different thing. But I think we also have... It is important to preserve agriculture. So we have to be very cognizant of that as well. So I support the motion.
So you second it, councillor? Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, we'll call the motion. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, two opposed. All right. So the motion passes. Okay, moving on to mayor's comments and remarks and announcements. I know it's everyone's favorite part of the meeting. Okay, first off, our thoughts go to the family of Frank Guera, retired city of Niagara Falls employee who passed away earlier this month. Our thoughts and prayers are with Frank and his family during this time. In other news, myself along with our CAO, Ken Todd, and our director of business development, Serge Fellacetti, were pleased to come back from a successful trade mission to China. It was very exciting to see the interest. Of course, we were selling the destination of Niagara Falls for investment opportunities. It's also interesting to note that in China, everywhere you looked, in all the cities we went to, and in some cities bigger than, higher population than our country, cranes everywhere in every direction, yet they're concerned about their economic bubble bursting as well because they're losing manufacturing jobs. They're losing them to the Philippines and to Taiwan, and they're losing them to Vietnam. And it's interesting to see the cycle continue. So they're looking at other investment opportunities, and Canada is very attractive to them because of our banking, our dollar, our economy, our absolutely incredible way of life. And of course, there's already millions of Chinese living here. They're very comfortable coming here. So it was a very successful mission. We met people doing similar missions from all over the world. We were the only city represented at the biggest trade show in China for investment in Shemin. We were the only city represented from all of Canada. And there was one other province represented as well. So we were heard. We met with some very interested people who are very well-to-do that have already been here. And we had to do the cultural thing. It was a very, very busy trip. We were, at least on two occasions, we're changing into our suits in airport washrooms. It was a continuous rush, and of course, they're 12 hours ahead of us. So you know, when you think you'd be sleeping, you'd be up and vice versa. So definitely threw it off. And it was funny, our BlackBerries, all the messages were coming through all during the night. During the day, it was silent because everyone was sleeping. So it was interesting. But it was a very successful mission, and we're working toward having some investment come here. We're already having discussions, so we'll keep everyone abreast as this comes forward. On that issue, councillor?
On that issue, I just want to say congratulations for going. This council has been often criticized for not doing enough to bring more industry to Niagara Falls. So I have to say, I'm thrilled to see that you're going out there and you're looking for it, and you're inviting them to come here. So while I'm on that topic, I'd like to advance to BDD 2011-07, and that is your business trip to Dubai in October 2011. All I would say to you is go get them and bring them home. So I'd like to move that recommendation and congratulate you for taking a different approach because we have not actively sent our staff and/or our mayor in a long time to places like that, asking them to please bring your business here. And if I understand this correctly, those cultures demand you come visit and ask. And now we're dealing with different cultures, and you know what? You have to go with the flow. So good luck and bring us back some business.
Thank you very much. And we got a second by councillor Morocco. I appreciate the intention, councillor Wing. And yes, you're right. And that was explained to us because we said, well, why don't we just do a Skype conversation? And they said, no, you don't understand. That's not how it works there. You have to come and show the respect and the sincerity that we are interested in their investment by coming to visit them. They've been here already. And so that's what we're going to do. And appreciate that. So we have a motion from councillor Iannone, seconded by councillor Morocco for BDD 2011-07, trip to Dubai. Is there any other discussion on that motion? Yes, councillor Gates?
Yeah, just on that, I guess the cost for the trip will come out of the business development budget. And I agree with what's been said by councillor Iannone. We have to diversify our local economy. We can't just rely on tourism. So if we can go to other countries, whether, no matter where it is around the world, and bring that type of manufacturing into our community, I think that's important. And your point is exactly right. It's a different culture, a different way of they think in some of these other countries. So you have to go to them before they'll come here. And I commend you for doing it. And I agree that we should support this.
Thank you very much. And it should be noted that we've had a number of opportunities and invites to come to different countries and cities. And we always make it very clear, we're not coming to visit. We'll come to do a deal, and then you can show us what you have, but not until you're interested in putting something forward. So we appreciate that. So we'll call the motion. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you. Appreciate your support. And we'll come back with some good news, I'm sure. Also, and for what it's worth, I was taking pictures while I was there of American cars that were in China too. You want to me? Yeah, GM and Ford. I've got pictures of both. Moving along, Random Act of Kindness Day. It's promoted for November the 12th. It's put on by the Niagara Community Foundation. Go to niagaracommunityfoundation.org if you want to find out more. It's basically, do something nice randomly with no expectation of anything in return. Again, it's November the 12th, and you can go to the website if you want some more information. The 10th anniversary of September 11th, we called it Imagine, after the John Lennon song Imagine, took place at the Scotiabank Convention Center. We had a few hundred people there. It was well-received. It was a wonderful event. It was a spiritual event, more so than a religious event. It was a looking forward event rather than looking back event. It was a positive direction, trying to see the good that could come out of something that happened before. And we want to thank all of our emergency services personnel that joined us. And as well, we had councillors Wing, councillor Thompson, councillor Gates. And am I missing anybody right now? No. And it was... And councillor Peter Angelo? Yes, and councillor Peter Angelo, okay. Well, he was the one, he was the loudest, singing Imagine louder than anybody. How could I forget councillor Peter Angelo? But it was pretty neat to see. It was a real wonderful event. Kojiko was there, taping the thing in its entirety, and it's running on Channel 10 now. So if you have an opportunity, definitely check out our Imagine event. Western alumni, I was able to greet my local fellow alumni from the Niagara region, from the University of Western Ontario, at an event again at the Scotia Centre. It was a lot of fun. It was neat reuniting with a number of alumni. So we had that event go on. On Sunday, yesterday, we had the Terry Fox Run. I was joined by councillors Iannone, Thompson, and Gates. And normally councillor Peter Angelo was there, but he had his kids' soccer championships he had to get to. But it was a record number. And we had our honorary event chair, Jay Triano, local homegrown hero that came out for the event. The weather was outstanding. It was a great day, and they set records with their numbers. Matter of fact, they ran out of pledge sheets. They had to go make more for the crowd. They didn't anticipate this crowd that they had. So that's great news. Upcoming events, the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. This invite is extended to everyone here in the room and watching at home and everyone else. It's going to be Thursday, September 29th. Please write it down. It's at Club Italia. The doors open. It's an early morning. Doors open at 6:00 a.m. with breakfast at 6:15, and the event starting at 7:00. This year, we've got hockey legend Paul Henderson. We all know Paul for scoring the famous goal, but he's got an extra special story to tell this year that I think everyone's going to want to gather on and listen to. So if you do like tickets, tickets are $12.50 for adults, $8 for kids or students. And you just call our office here at City Home. We'll get you your tickets. And again, the date is Thursday, September 29th. Did you have a comment, councillor? Okay, I thought you were going to comment. I'm not going to sing any songs. That wouldn't be right. Trail naming, in honor of former councillor Paisley January Poole. That is going to take place tomorrow at 5:30 at the latest part of the Millennium Trail, the part that goes between Morrison and Thorold Stone Road. We're going to gather at the Morrison Road area, Morrison and Drummond. There's a little parking lot there. There's not a lot of parking in the parking lot. There's only about a half dozen spots. So we'll just, we'll all park at councillor Iannone's house, which is right around the corner. We'll go there for beverages afterwards. But that'll be taking place at 5:30 tomorrow night, and we'll be there to honor Paisley. We're pretty excited about that. Next up is Our Turn to Pray. The week of prayer begins with the opening service at Redeemer Church on Sunday, September 25th. That'll take place at 6:00 p.m. So we encourage everyone to check out the Our Turn website at ourturn.ca for more details about this week of prayer. The Summer Trillium Awards. This year's award ceremony is taking place on Wednesday, September 28th at 6:00 p.m. We're happy to honor all of those residents, make the community a much more beautiful place to go to and to live in with their beautiful yards and the beautiful manicuring that they do. So that's Wednesday, September 28th. Niagara Falls Culture Fest takes place, Niagara Falls Farmers Market, from 9:00 till 1:00 p.m. on Saturday, October 1st. There'll be cultural entertainment, a variety of food to sample, exciting entertainment, and displays. Everyone's encouraged to go to the Niagara Farmers Market Saturday, October 1st. TV Kojiko Open House. Our friends at TV Kojiko are hosting the first open house on Wednesday, September 28th, from 6:30 till 9:00 p.m. Everyone's invited to see the studios, meet the staff, and see what's new at TV Kojiko. They're advertising a chance to win a free iPad 2 as well. So they're located on Thorold Stone Road, or on McLeod Road, rather. And again, it's Wednesday, September 28th, from 6:30 until 9:00 p.m. And just last two items here. Just wanted to point out to the council, from councillor Peter Angelo's motion not long ago, to put together a questionnaire for all of the provincial parties to answer. We put together a three-question questionnaire. We decided to keep it short, looking for some specifics on where they stand in regard to supporting a theater, 8,000-seat theater, where they stand on stand in regard to supporting a theater, 8,000-seat theater, where they stand on go transit, year-round commuter service, and lastly, where they stand in regard to the NHS. And we asked them these specific questions. To date, we've only received a response from the premier, from McGinty, with a personally signed letter. We're hoping that by the October 3 meeting, we hear from the other part, the other parties. But as of today, we've only received one response. So we're hoping that we hear from the other parties because we told them in the letter, we would be sharing this with our council and with our community. So hopefully, we can get word out to the other parties to please get back to us so we can share where they stand on issues that are important to the city. And lastly, it's come to our attention that longtime TV Kojiko volunteer, Mike O'Connor, is going to be retiring. And you're used to seeing Mike O'Connor right back here in this corner, working this, this camera, whispering into his microphone, you know, receiving results. Anyway, Mike has been, is gonna be retiring from his volunteer position with the local station. He's been the face week after week at council after council for many, many years. And what I'd like to do just before I read this little tribute to Mike, if I can get Mike to come up here. Mike, I see you out there. If you could come up here and join me. Look, Mike, come on up. How are you?
Good.
Good. Come on up over here. So you gotta face the camera, look everyone at home.
(laughing)
Usually, Mike's on the backend of the camera, and today, he's on the front end. So starting off, I'll read this little background to Mike. Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay, great. Having responsibility for all facets of on-air production can be a stressful job. Is that true?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. And let me tell you, he always gives me-
(inaudible) over there.
Is it stressful?
Yeah.
The camera's supposed to go up and down, right? That's what we're supposed to see. And I can tell you, Mike oftentimes, see, to get to my office, I have to go through that door. And he corners me first to give me his opinion on all the crazy decisions that we make every night. So he's always giving feedback, which is great. And I can tell you that from my perspective. The successful TV Kojiko volunteer has to be tightly organized to be able to communicate clearly and succinctly with everyone on and off the set, from directors to community producers to the technical crew. They have to have a gift for thinking on their feet, ready to come up with creative ideas under extraordinary time pressures. Mike O'Connor bestows problem-solving and a love for seeing tangible results despite the physical toll of the work. Mike joined the Community Channel team back in 1997 when it was known as Rogers. He saw an ad on the TV about the opportunity for volunteer work to produce local content, and the rest is history. In early 1997, Kojiko Cable Systems purchased a number of Rogers Cable Systems across Ontario. The Niagara location was one of those systems. With continued years of service, Mike possesses 15 years of being a dedicated member of the Niagara Falls City Council Production Crew. During this time, Mike has averaged over 1,500 hours of community service with TV Kojiko. Mike displays his excellence through his energy toward his teamwork and strives to produce nothing but quality programming. Mike has helped numerous volunteers and producers with duties throughout his time with TV Kojiko. His sense of humor, you have to have humor to work in this room, and professional manner make Mike a pleasure to work with. And TV Kojiko is very thankful of all of Mike's contributions. And as well, we have our certificate. Mike, on behalf of the members of City Council, it gives me great pleasure to congratulate and recognize you for your 15 years and over 1,500 hours of dedication, commitment, and invaluable volunteer service to TV Kojiko and to the City Council. And as a small token of our appreciation for all that you've done here with us, I'd like to present this little gift to you-
Thank you very much.
-and present this certificate for you.
Thank you.
All right.
(applause)
Okay, that's great. And you wanna say some words, Mike?
Thanks very much.
I'd like to say a few words to the camera.
I appreciate this very much. And it's been a great learning experience that I've had here. And I've learned a little bit about how local government works, and it's been great fun. A pleasure. (laughing) Thank you very much.
I'd be remiss if I didn't make a quick comment. When Kojiko mentioned they wanted to honor Mike, I thought the perfect way of honoring him was for him to not have to come here this evening and sit through a council meeting. But he's such a trooper that he decided that it would be only appropriate that he show up. So I thank Mike for all his time. And obviously, I've worked with him over the years on Wayne's talk show and here at council. And he's definitely a professional.
That's great. Thank you very much, Mike. Appreciate that. He's gonna save on his aspirin bill now, that's for sure. Okay, moving on to communications and comments of the city clerk. So we'll go, yeah, councillor Peter Angelo?
First.
Okay, I'm sorry. First communication, JMAC Memorial Hockey Tournament, requesting the youth hockey rate for a tournament scheduled in April 2012. Councillor Peter Angelo? Oh, by the way, and I want to mention that the Recreation Committee of the city supports the youth rate as well for the JMAC tournament.
Yeah, your worship. And I was gonna mention that there is a letter in our, in our hand up from the Rec Commission. And your worship, I think if anyone is to talk about the loss of Mr. McLean in our community, I think we would all agree that, that it came much too soon. Having read the letter, I, I find it very commendable on his wife to, to even have the strength, your worship, after having him, I guess, after having lost him so, so soon, to want to come back and, and create a memorial scholarship fund so that she can give money to athletes in our community. And I think if anyone knew John, and I guess I was lucky enough to, he was much more skilled at ball hockey or even hockey for that than I was. But he touched a lot of people in a lot of ways. He gave back to, he gave back to the sport in so many ways. He was, he was a good player. He played in our minor system. He played for our local junior bees. He was a coach in our minor system. He volunteered. And he was also a known HA ref, and, and he reffed a lot of minor hockey games. Your worship, I did talk to Mrs. Moldenhauer about the request. And I know that it says in the report that it would be lost revenue to provide the reduced rate. But having not had the ice rented yet, Mrs. Moldenhauer agrees that it's not really lost revenue because it's actually a gain in revenue because otherwise, no one is renting the ice. So your worship, I think that we can't help but to, to grant the request, and I would be happy to move it.
Okay, it's moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Maves. Any other discussion on the issue? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you. Next item, Niagara Parks Commission School of Horticulture Legacy Garden. School of Horticulture alumni for their 75th anniversary are requesting $500 for this proposed legacy garden. You know, in the notes here, they mentioned that they've received it from other municipalities, Guelph, Cambridge, and whatnot.
I would move it.
Okay, it's moved by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Maves. Is there any discussion? Councillor Peter Angelo?
Your worship, I was wondering, does that mean that they're gonna send us a check for 999,500?
Yeah, yeah. Let's hope. That's another discussion. Okay.
I understand.
Yeah. Yeah, this is for the alumni student. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you. Item three, Community Support Services of Niagara, requesting financial contribution for senior expo being held at the Coronation 50+ Rec Center on September the 30th. Do we have any direction from council? Mister Clerk? Yeah, Mister Clerk?
Well, what I gather from the correspondence is that the entire expo costs $1,200. So I don't think they're necessarily looking for $1,200 from council. They're obviously just looking to defray their costs. So, you know, I think anything would be acceptable.
This is our own seniors rec center, and I would move approval.
Okay, moved by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Gates.
For how much?
Oh, what number are you gonna pick?
I think that should be after- After listening to the clerk's comments, I would imagine that would be negotiated with them. I could say up to $1,200, but that's the entire cost, is it not? Do you have a recommendation?
Yeah, our recommendation is always, don't give any money away.
Well, we've got Kathy Moldenhauer. Maybe Kathy, do we have any idea how much of their budget they already have?
How old is the clerk?
Forty-six.
Almost there.
He's forty-six.
Four more years.
Yeah, that's right. Four more years.
The three of us can go.
Yeah.
Through to the mayor, this event actually is not organized by the city. The group is actually renting the facility for the event. So the organization is looking for dollars to provide a free lunch and speaker for the seniors.
For the seniors at our-
At our facility and for the community.
Okay. So you know how much they've raised so far to-
No, sorry, not to date. Like, we would not be charging them a rental fee because we would waive that as part of our contribution because our senior members are attending the event.
Okay.
Well, let's just leave it at, that we support them with their efforts and see what staff can do to assist them. And if there is some financial involvement, I would suspect would be minimal.
Did you wanna have an upside number? Like, you wanna say up to 500?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Okay. Is there any other discussion on that? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, Camisole's Fresh Foods, they're requesting a traffic light on Thoroldstone Road at their entrance. They've had several accidents. Councillor Iannone?
I move we, and we need a staff report. Come back to council so that we get some information. But I would tell you, that's a terrible, that's a terrible building to try to get into.
Yep. We're gonna ask Mister Dren to comment.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Basically, what, because it's not a regional road, staff would not comment on it. Or, sorry, because it is a regional road, staff would not comment on it. And therefore, the recommendation is just to send a letter outlining the concerns from council to-
Okay. Okay, so it's moved by councillor Iannone, seconded by councillor Thompson, that we ask the region to investigate. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Next up, Niagara Falls Ministerial Fellowship, requests that we proclaim Week of September 25th to October 2nd, Week of Prayer for the city. Moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Gates. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Canada World Youth requests October 17th through 23rd be proclaimed Canada World Youth Week in the city. Councillor, moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Morocco. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Lupus Foundation of Ontario requests Lupus Awareness Month in the city of Niagara Falls for October. Moved by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Peter Angelo. All those in favor? Okay. Royal Canadian Legion requests September 18th through 24th be proclaimed Legion Week in Niagara Falls. Okay, moved by councillor Morocco, seconded by councillor Iannone. All those in favor? That's good because we put the flag up today. It's City Hall. Okay?
Good call.
Yeah. Niagara Falls Fire Department requests October 9th through 15th be proclaimed as Fire Prevention Week. Moved by councillor Iannone, seconded by councillor Gates. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Are there any additional items for consideration, Mister Clerk?
Yeah, your worship, there's one communication, an email from the downtown BIA. If you recall, council in May approved 15 members to their, to their board. Technically, their constitution calls for nine, but because of the issues that had occurred, council in their authority granted 15 be approved. Three have since left the board for one reason or another. And they're suggesting that instead of just going down to 12, that they fill the three positions with the next three on the list.
So moved.
Moved by councillor Iannone, seconded by councillor Morocco. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. We have a resolution.
In camera first.
What's that? Oh, I'm sorry. We've got in-camera reports. We'll ask the clerk to do this.
Yep. One item related to 6505 Fallsview Boulevard. Let the city keep the letter of credit, give notice to the parties that it will be cashed, and enforce the corporation's rights under the Section 37 agreement.
Okay. Need a motion for acceptance? Moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Gates. Any discussion? Conflicts by councillor Thompson and Wing. Right. Okay, all those in favor? Okay, thank you. Next is our resolution for the city of Niagara Falls, supporting a submission to the Enabling Accessibility Fund to renovate and retrofit the Niagara Falls Bus Terminal. Okay, moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Iannone. Any discussion on that? All those in favor? Okay. Next up, the consent agenda.
Move the consent agenda.
Okay, move the consent agenda. Yep, with the one we've already approved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Morocco. Is a comment, councillor Wing?
I just wanted to pull RNC 2011-13 for separate consideration.
13.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we'll pull that one. Yeah, councillor Gates?
Just for comment on CD 21114 on the NHS.
Okay, did you wanna pull that one?
Yeah, just so I can make a comment.
Okay, okay. So we'll pull those two. Any other ones? Okay, so we have a motion to move the remainder of the consent agenda. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. So we'll start off with CD 201114 NHS complaints. Councillor Gates?
Yeah, thanks very much, Mayor Deodati. First of all, I, I think how important it is to have Kevin Smith, I'm not so sure he's a doctor, as a supervisor. But I think this council put pressure from this Niagara Falls City Council over a long period of time, long before I became a councillor, obviously yourself, the mayor, and played an important role in educating the residents of Niagara Falls, surrounding the area of the lack of quality healthcare that we have in Niagara. In some of the documentation, it talked here about the fact that some of our complaints weren't, weren't as, weren't as kind of hard as it should have been. So I want to make sure, put into the record that this council has gone on record on talking about the ER closures in Port Colborne and Fort Erie and the effects that it's having in Niagara Falls on our ER. The doctors that left the emergency ward here, and quite frankly, were forced out by the NHS. We have the potential right now to lose maternity. That's never made any sense. You have the honeymoon capital of the world, and we have no maternity ward. The other services in the falls as well. The closing of the hospital beds, which this council talked about, the nurses that were laid off, and they actually bought some of the nurses out, made absolutely no sense. And the big one that I think really is the one that we think we should talk about and make sure that we continue to talk about, particularly over the next few weeks, is the contracting out the cleaning service to an American company where they, they put the residents, I believe, at, at risk. And as we found out, the unelected Linds and the NH Board, also an unelected, I believe, need to apologize to the residents of Niagara. I believe that the DEFs, or the CDEFs and other in Niagara, were contributed to this board and to, to the Linds. So I'm pleased that they put a supervisor in place. But I think this council, if they have the opportunity, including yourself, Mayor Deodati, and councillor Iannone, on, on September 28th at the Maritton Legion in St. Catherine's, Mr. Smith, the supervisor, along with CKTV, which will be broadcasting it live, you'd have the opportunity to direct questions to Mr. Smith and talk about what's going on with healthcare. So I think it's an important thing to do, particularly with the provincial election in full swing. I, I believe it starts at 6:30. It's for two hours. It's at the, it's in Maritton. But I think it would be really good if some of the councillors, and particularly yourself, Jim, and go there and talk about healthcare. Because what's gone on in this community and the surrounding area, this crisis has to stop for our residents. So that's why I just wanted to say a few words on the report. Really appreciate the report, but I think it's important that we're very clear on what this council's done over the last number of years.
Okay.
Far before I get on council.
Okay, councillor Thompson? Thank you.
Yes, it's suggesting that the complaints be referred to the supervisor. Well, I'd like through you to the clerk to ask if they could compile some of the complaints we've had over the years at council through the media. There have been so many cases and circumstances that complaints regarding the hospital and the issues at the hospital over the years that I think they should be all compiled and given to the supervisor to make sure he is aware, and if necessary, to investigate them. This has been going on since 2000. And he has a file that thick of correspondence that went on. So I'd like us to be a little, put a little effort into trying to refer these complaints so that they can have the information, not just the broad base, but some of the specifics that have been brought to this council and, and to the community's attention over the years.
Okay. Is there, someone else had their hand up? Comment on the NHS? Okay, so we have a recommendation here that we direct complaints to Dr. Kevin Smith regarding the NHS. So do we have a motion? Or do we need a motion?
On the-
Moved by councillor Gates, seconded by councillor Iannone?
We'd ask to speak.
I'm sorry?
And that we ask to speak to him.
And yeah, and that we have a request in to speak with him on a more intimate one-on-one basis. Okay. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you. And then councillor Wing requested RC 201113 Arts and Culture Wall of Fame 2011 inductees.
Thank you. I was really shocked when I looked at this and saw that the name Jules- Zimmerman wasn't on there this year. I am advised by his family that he has now twice been nominated, and if this was for the Sports Wall fame, he would have automatically been on there. Anybody who accomplishes recognition internationally is automatically on that wall. I guess things are a little bit different with this one, which is really the second half of the motion I'm going to make. I don't know, he is just so well-known internationally. He's been playing Europe, Asia. Right now, he's doing a tour of the western and southern US. And ask anybody under 30, and chances are, they're probably a fan, and there's local people looking to him for inspiration. There was an interview by John Law. He wrote a story about Brad Pine that was recently in the review, and Brad was saying, wow, you know, look at what he's done. He's younger than me. You know, he's a huge inspiration. So he definitely has had an impact on the community, born and raised here. I think we all know his family. And, you know, according to what staff have given us, the criteria for getting onto the wall are outstanding achievement in a person's artistic or cultural field. I think that has more than been accomplished, measurable impact on the Niagara Falls community. No question about that. Must have resided in Niagara Falls or have Niagara Falls as the main venue for, for their art, is an extensive period of time. Well, born and raised here, this is where he got started. Of course, yeah, he's gone on to a lot bigger things, but he really is a hometown boy made good. And I know there's been a criticism of the wall before, because it took four years for James Cameron's name to get up there, and I'm willing to give the committee the benefit of the doubt, and maybe nobody thought to nominate him, because they thought everybody else was. In this case, though, there's been, according to what I'm told by the family, two nominations, and it really undermines the credibility of the whole process for such a glaring omission to be made. So the first part of my motion is that the name Joel Zimmerman, also known as Dead Mouse, be added to the 2011 inductees, and also that the staff review and report back on the criteria and the process that's used to select the inductees, because I don't think the scoring is really reflecting what it should. And, you know, there's some, there's certainly some room for improvement in this whole process. So that's my two for motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Counsel Wing, seconded by Counsel Ryanone, and also by his name, Joel Zimmerman, or Dead Mouse, or Dead M5. Is that what you called him, Counsel Ryanone?
For anybody who rides with a teenager, which I drive with every day, and it comes on the screen, I thought they were Dead Mouse 5. And my son informed to me, that's an S, it's a 5, but it's supposed to be an S. So anybody who's looking at their screen, this is who she's talking about. So hip and cool comes off my laces.
Yeah, exactly. And also, you know, it's been noted that, I mean, he's written, done the theme song for shows like Jersey Shores, CSI. He's been featured in all sorts of shows. He, he's very, very well-known, but he's one of these guys, he's kind of like a subculture. He fills, anyone who knows him, he sells out stadiums. But like you said, if you're above 30, there's a good chance you never heard of him, but he's legendary if you're underneath that. So that kind of covers most people in this room. What's that? Out I hear?
And it is my go, Diego, go.
So we have a motion by Counsel Wing, seconded by Counsel Ryanone. Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. All right, thank you, Counselor. Bylaws. I'd ask the clerk to advise, are there any additional bylaws or amendments to the bylaws for tonight?
Motion introduce the bylaws.
Okay, we have a motion by Counsel Peter Angelo to introduce the bylaws, seconded by Counsel Morocco. All those in favor? Okay.
Bylaws 2011-115 to 2011-125 read a first time.
Second and third.
Second and third readings by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Maves. All those in favor? It's unanimous.
Bylaws 2011-115 to 2011-125 read a second and third time and passed.
Okay, new business. Counsel Ryanone, Counsel Wing?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Morocco, Counsel Thompson?
I think we've all been contacted by John Elbanyes from Studio 55 in regards to the building problems he was having on his property. The first was in regards to him having to turn over a daylight triangle, pay for it. There was a whole lot attached that I had called a member of our senior staff who said, oh, no, 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 he has to do that, only to find out later on that it was covered under the former site plan approval. So no, we didn't have to do that. He'd have paid for that, by the way, not having had to do that. Then he was told he had to pay $5,800 in development fees for a basement he's not developing, and he's not using, it's just simply storage. He cannot do work down there. He's contacted most of us, so I would like to make a motion that he be, that it follow along the same lines as the prior site plan approval concept, and that he be waived the $5,800 in development fees for the downstairs. There's a second part to that, but I'm gonna ask for a staff report.
Okay. That's moved by Counsel Ryanone, seconded by Counsel Thompson. Is there any other discussion? Yes, the clerk?
Well, I don't know that you can waive them. You can provide a grant equal to $5,800. Under the development charges by law, there is a specific appeal process if there's been something that's been incorrectly calculated, et cetera, but you can't waive the fees technically.
Counsel Ryanone?
And herein lies my problem. The incorrectly calculated, they have to pay upfront, then they have to appeal, then they have it reimbursed. Here's a guy who already got screwed around on his daylight triangle that he didn't have to pay for, that he would have paid for, I might add. So can, is there a possibility that he continue to build, then have a report back to council in regards to, it's, he's not using it, it's his basement. And I'd like to add a second one on that. He previously had met, his architect had met with our engineering, and they'd gone to the site plan on February 16th. They discussed the new build, they okayed it, and what was in existence in regards to the drainage and the parking spaces. And then, just another, another wrench in the, in the plan. They then tell him later on, an entirely different story. It boggles my mind how small business has to deal like this, because there has been mistake after mistake after mistake made here. So I'd like the ability then for him to continue to build, and rather than pay, appeal, and give it back, have a report come to us so we decide whether we're gonna grant that $5,800.
Yeah, you're right. We want to eliminate red tape. We want to encourage business to expand, and we want to have a seamless kind of one-stop shop, and...
Well, anybody listening to this story, they would give up.
Yeah. Okay, so we've got a motion by Counsel Ryanone, seconded by Counsel Thompson.
This is ridiculous.
Is there any other discussion? Okay. Did you want to add something?
I just want to make sure that the understanding is he can continue to build without holding up while the report is being made, come back to us. If indeed, we, we end up charging him the $5,800 through the process, but I don't want to see his building being held up.
Okay, that's the motion. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you. Counsel Wing?
A couple things. First of all, just a few public service announcements on behalf of the Niagara Falls Humane Society. On Friday, they celebrated their second anniversary of the Adoption Center operating at Niagara Square, and I'd just like to personally thank all the volunteers who've made this possible, because it operates solely on volunteer effort and also Niagara Square. There is a microchip clinic coming up this Friday, September 23rd, from 10:00 to 4:30 at the shelter on Shipewa Parkway. It's $25, and that chip is your pet's ticket home if they, if it ever strays, if, you know, it gets out by accident, if it's an indoor animal. And even if it leaves Niagara Falls, it strays out of the falls or you move away, it still is its ticket home to wherever you live at that time. And finally, the non-denominational blessing of the animals is going to be held this coming Sunday, September 25th, 2:00 p.m. at the shelter, celebrating the role of animals in our lives. And my second issue is, just again today, I noticed visitors, and I've seen this quite a bit since the go-buses started stopping at Stanley in the 420. I see visitors lugging suitcases southbound along Stanley Avenue, heading for the Falls View, Victoria Center tourist areas. And I keep thinking, gee whiz, you know, it's one of the grittiest parts of the city, and, you know, that stretch of Stanley, and it must be horrendous to, you know, traverse. All it is is just gray, barren expanse of concrete and, you know, some of our, not as well-to-do accommodations. You know, it's a poor impression for those visitors. I imagine even for all the millions of cars that pass there. I'm just wondering if it's possible for our staff to try and bring some of the tourism sector stakeholders together to try and get a little bit of beautification happening along that stretch of Stanley, because the rest of our tourist areas look great. It's just that stretch of Stanley, which really is a big entryway, and, you know, especially now with people walking and pulling their suitcases. They're spending quite a bit of time there. It just can't leave a very good first impression of Niagara Falls on those visitors. So if we can sort of try and bring some people together to work up a little beautification scheme.
Do you want to make?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, okay. Moved by Counsel Wing, seconded by Counsel Ryanone. Any, yes, Counsel Ryanone?
On that microchip thing, my granddaughter can get out the front door now. 25 bucks, I'm in. I know loser.
Any other discussion on the beautification motion? Yep, Counsel Thompson?
I will.
Yeah, I think we have bylaws. The one motel right there across from the old Gerber plant is particularly unkept, and it's not in a BIA area, unfortunately, so there is no one group that directly can influence them. But we have bylaws in, and particularly in tourism commercial areas. So I would hope that everything would be done to try to accomplish that, because it certainly is an eyesore. There's graffiti and painting on the front of it. It really is not a great area, but it's not in a BIA where we could come to grips with it through a group of people trying to control it. It's an individual, a couple of individual properties. So I think we should have a report back on it to see if we can't do something about, we should know what's going on, because it's an extremely important factor. I agree. I see the people on the go-bus coming there and walking up there. In fact, there probably should be an effort to try to see if there can be some kind of coordination of transit facilities to get the people up there when the go-bus does come, because at the present time, it looks kind of sad, a string of people pulling suitcases, walking up the street. There should be some kind of a transit facility and maybe an opportunity to increase the coffers for the transit. So I'd like to see if that can happen too.
Okay, so, yeah, Counsel, Mr. Wing?
Mr. Wing? Sorry, I was busy, obviously, signing bylaws, et cetera. I didn't quite get the area you're talking about, Counsel Wing. Can you clarify that for me?
Yes, Stanley between the 420 and Ferry Street.
Okay, okay. I know, I know to that. I know there had been some discussion in the past about that section possibly forming a BIA. I know we've tried to encourage them to do that. There was even some talk about them maybe joining with Ferry Street at one point in time, or maybe Victoria Center. So there has been discussion, but they've never made that formal request, so.
Okay, so I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Counsel Morocco?
Yes, Mayor DiDadi. I've been asked by some residents to actually bring forward this question regarding the, I guess, limitations of a committee of adjustments. And here's a note that they've asked me to bring forward. It says, what are the limits of this committee when determining what a minor variance is? In April, this committee approved an application that went against a council-approved bylaw 2005-55 and planning department recommendations. In this decision, the committee approved an application that was, that has forced the residents of the affected neighborhood to appeal to the OMB and subpoena city planning staff to represent them. In spite of the bylaw and planning department recommendations, that was quite clear in stating that these variations, variances were not required or needed. Some committee approved the following, and one of them was a building setback required 18 meters, and it was reduced to 12.13 meters, a reduction of 33 percent or one-third the requirement. Landscape buffer required nine meters, reduced to 1.22 meters, sorry, a reduction of 86.5 percent or more than four fifths of the requirement. Lot line buffer required three meters, reduced to zero meters, a reduction of 100 percent or all of the requirement. So when you see this type of decision, you have to ask yourself, is this a minor variance? What would be a major change? I believe this committee, I believe this committee on this decision has exceeded its authority on the purpose that had been intended for. So I would like staff to bring back a report outlining the committee's guidelines, including its authority and limitations in regards to what is classified a minor or major variance.
Okay, we have a motion by Counsel Morocco, seconded by Counsel Ryanone. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, thank you. Counselor Thompson?
Yes, thank you. I would like to bring to your attention a complaint that actually brought over a year ago with respect to the intersection at Churches Lane and Stanley Avenue. Mr. Evans has been, wrote to me personally over a year ago. I brought it up at council. It was referred to the region, and as so many times, when matters are referred to the region, we never hear of it again. We never have a report back. We never get correspondence, and it seems to be beyond the control of the people at the region to respond to local council members, or local councils for that matter. So I'm embarrassed to bring Mr. Evans' comments again, the corner of Churches Lane and, and Stanley, where several people have died in accidents. This is a very serious area, and he brings to my attention where there are speed humps that are put on Fortage Road, where there are a substantial crosswalk which is identified with large signs and markings that make it stand out, and yet still nothing has been done. There's been no correspondence, there's been nothing back, although I think the clerk did send something to me in the last week or so, a comment, a basic comment from one of the regional people with respect to this. I could also throw in my comments about the entrance to the neighborhood of St. Davids on St. Paul Street, across Amigo Valley Golf Course, suggesting either returning lanes or go in there. People are going in there, and there's a, development is almost built out now. 150 homes in there. People are turning, left to go in there, going, and the cars are racing behind them down the hill. It's an extremely dangerous situation, and the cars racing in two lanes coming up the hill is extremely dangerous. And I have to say, the last time I brought it up, the police have been out there and monitoring a little bit with radar, but it certainly has to be changed. One lane coming up and using the other lane for a turning lane would slow down the traffic, because if you're coming up there and you're on the right-hand side coming from St. Davids, the cars are just whipping by you there. The police have been there, but they've been up on the top of the hill, where people have to stop at the light at the top, so they don't always catch them. If they were down there a little further, so hopefully that could be referred to the police again. And I'd really like some answers regarding these two matters from the Regional Engineering Department.
Well, would we ask our traffic department? I'm not sure, Carl, the issue of Stanley Avenue near Churches Lane, we've referred it to the region. Have you gotten any feedback from them at all in that regard?
It would be, in relation to Dean's correspondence, we would get that type of response back from them. Sometimes it's an email, sometimes it's a letter, so it's not consistent. And I know in the case of St. Paul and the area across from Amigo Valley, we did, you know, formally request it, and they did respond back to that, so we can dig up that correspondence.
Okay.
Well, through the chair, the two items. Number one, the Stan, or, sorry, Stanley at Churches Lane. What was the complainant's name?
Mr. Evans.
Mr. Evans. Mr. Evans sent that email last fall in good faith. He sent it, and we as staff did forward that to the region. And, you know, I appreciate your frustration. We pass it on because it's a regional road, expecting that the regional staff will respond in some fashion to the request. Mr. Cousins responded the other day. He acknowledged that indeed, we had sent it in the past, and acknowledged that in light of the latest traffic fatality, that they'd be looking into the matter. You know, you fill in the rest there. I mean, you know, obviously, this was something that hopefully they should have responded to last year on that. The, the turn into the neighborhoods of St. Davids, we've probably written that letter to the region at least three or four times. And, you know, in fact, so many times that I have the standard letter on the computer that I just rewrite every time it comes up. So I think this, you know, staff occasionally will send these staff to staff, and, you know, I got an email on something related matter saying, well, you know, we're not gonna necessarily respond... know, we're not going to necessarily respond to staff on this from a regional staff person, and that's fair. I think some of these, we have to get more political in our strategy on these, whether it's the mayor, you know, going through the regional council agenda to see if these items are coming up and if the councillors, you know, want to lobby their regional counterparts on these things. Or, you know, I mean, Mr. Sinclair referred to it today about the fact that in the past, I was sending those letters to the director of planning at the region. And, you know, if that's maybe not a persuasive way, if it's a motion from council, we'll send it to the regional chair. Whether that helps the process remains to be seen.
Okay, I've done what I feel I have to do. Maybe through the mayor's office, we could at least get some responses about Stanley and Churches Lane in particular. The other one is not as crucial, but I think Mr. Evans is totally frustrated by the fact that he received absolutely nothing. So anyway, I think I've said enough on that. I was called a couple of weeks ago to come to City Hall to pick up an envelope which was sent to my attention. And you all recall a few weeks ago where a young Oriental lady was down in the park, sat on the railing to take her picture and lost her life. And a very tragic situation and one that probably had worldwide international coverage about the tragedy that took place there. Anyway, in the envelope I received from a Mr. Tom Dugus who lives on Lea Avenue, who is a retired professional engineer and walks down through the park every day, observes these people sitting constantly on the railing at the park, wrote me a very couple-page letter, but also a architectural drawings of how he thought the Parks Commission could very easily and inexpensively prevent people from sitting on the railings. And he cites the railings in the park near the Maid of the Mist which have gone up recently and also at the Observation Tower over in Niagara Falls, New York. When I got this, I was really puzzled. What do I do with this? I, you know, I'm not going to run it down to the Parks Commission because it'll be lost in the mail down there. So anyway, I received this. This gentleman has spent hours on this, designing something that I think is very insignificant, very inexpensive, but through his professional engineering, he has what he thinks is a solution. So rather than treating this insignificantly, I'd like to pass this over to the engineering people here to refer to the Parks Commission to see if this has merit and if certainly they could respond to Mr. Dugus and thank him for his public interest. And he really has put an awful lot of effort in this and he is down there all the time and that's why he has taken such an interest. So I'll pass that on and ask if you could do that, pass that on to the Parks Commission. I know you have a lot of influence there.
Yes, thank you. Now, Councillor Thompson, regarding that issue on Stanley and Churches Lane, should we send a motion of council to the regional council? This way it gives it a little easier for me to, we'll get it on the agenda and I can deal with it.
I'd be happy to. Yes, thank you.
Okay, moved by Councillor Thompson, second by Councillor Wing. We send a letter to regional council addressing the issue, the dangerous issue of the situation on Stanley and Churches Lane. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. All right, thank you. Councillor Peter Angelo?
Thanks, Your Worship. I have a bunch of little items. Firstly, I asked a question about McLeod Road a couple of meetings ago and I asked about the region's intent to resurface McLeod Road. Our engineer was kind enough to send me the report that was approved this year at regional council. And it talked about resurfacing McLeod Road, but it only talked about resurfacing McLeod Road from Stanley Avenue west to Dorchester. They stopped at Dorchester Road. And when I questioned, when I questioned why they stopped at Dorchester Road, I guess the consensus is that they have a plan that they're going to widen McLeod Road. Your Worship, I don't really see that plan sort of being in the near future. So like, I think the residents along there are going to have to, I don't know, support a request to have it resurfaced or live with the pavement and the condition that it is for a lot of years. Because although the region says that they're going to have the works done within five years, I can't really see it. So it's difficult to, almost as Mr., or almost as Councillor Thompson was talking about, it's difficult to know where to go with it because it's not under our jurisdiction, yet it is in poor condition. And they're already resurfacing two-thirds of it. I don't understand why they can't, you know, continue that resurfacing all the way to the Queen Elizabeth Way. So I throw that out there and I don't know if you can take it to regional council and ask them to expand the resurfacing program so that they include Dorchester to the highway, but that would be a possibility. Or we can pass a resolution.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do it by resolution. Your Worship is probably happy to move that.
Okay. Moved by Councillor Peter Angelo, second by Councillor Einoni. Bless you that we go ask the region to continue resurfacing from Dorchester West to the Q E W. And any comment on the motion? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous.
Yeah, the second, the second item on McLeod Road deals with, and I don't know if anyone's been down there lately, but McLeod and Pin Oak Drive. If you're traveling from the highway towards Kaler Road, so if you're traveling west on McLeod Road, you go from two lanes to one lane instantly. And if you're traveling actually east from Kaler over to Niagara Square, you go from two lanes to one lane instantly again. They've actually created a bottleneck.
Yes.
And, I mean, I question, I question what they're doing there. And I don't think that the residents know. I, like, I know staff have been getting questions about it. So perhaps through you, through our engineer, and I know that he is knowledgeable somewhat of what's proposed to happen there. But I think that the residents out there need to know what's going to happen and what the region's plans are for that stretch of road.
Thank you, Councillor. And just before we ask, Ken to answer that, you're right because I did get calls through our office about that bottleneck and it's ridiculous.
Oh, it's crazy.
It really is.
They put in new curbs and everything, so it looks permanent. That's the thing.
Yeah, so we'll ask Ken if he could address that issue.
Thank you. The issue out there is mostly a question of timing. It is only an interim situation. It just so happens that the intersection improvements at Kaler, are at Kaler Road and McLeod and at Pin Oak and McLeod were built out to the full condition. There's been an environmental assessment, a study that's already been completed recommending the future cross-section for McLeod Road and the widening. So, yeah, unfortunately from a timing perspective, the intersections have been built out fully. The section in between, it's currently in our design stage, so we would be proceeding with the design on that. There's also property issues, utility relocation issues that have to be dealt with and then subject to obviously the budget process. The construction of the widening will proceed at some future date, within a few years. So we are, we're aware of the situation. It is only a temporary situation and we'll be moving forward with the full widening through there.
So did you want any kind of report back on that, Councillor?
Well, Your Worship, you know, I don't know that there's much that we can do. Again, it's a regional road. And, you know, according to the engineer, they do have plans to expand it. I mean, sure, I mean, I'll gladly make the motion to send a resolution to regional council, ask them to expedite the process. I don't know if that's possible, but I guess in essence, any information that we can be given about the future plans of the road would be good for us because we're the ones that basically get the questions. So it'd be nice to know what's going to happen there in the future.
Especially and then it goes to two lanes, goes two lanes to one lane, back to two lanes again. I know it doesn't seem like it was yet. Carl?
Just if I, it was mentioned about a regional road, that section is local.
I thought so, yeah. Because we're, that's what the region said. They said that was our responsibility. So we'll get a report back, a motion from Councillor Peter Angelo, second by Councillor Morocco, that we get a report back on that, the status and when we can expect it to be done.
So does that resolution get sent to our own staff then?
Yeah, yeah. A motion. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Unanimous?
Worship, another issue that I had was, I know back in the July meeting, the Canadian Women's Hockey League came to ask whether or not we would, I guess, donate some funds so that they could host their finals here. And when Councillor Thompson got up and asked them why they chose Niagara Falls, the lady that was speaking on behalf of the Canadian Women's Hockey Federation or on behalf of the league said that it was actually one of our residents, Mr. Michael Legret, who she was in contact with, who was encouraging her to come to Niagara Falls. She did. She liked the facility and that's why she made the request. And I didn't know whether or not we had sent a letter of thanks to Mr. Legret. So, I mean, if we haven't, I'd like to make a motion, Worship, that we do so.
Okay. Moved by Councillor Peter Angelo, second by Councillor Thompson. All those in favor that we send a letter of thank you to Michael Legret for the women's hockey sending that business our way? Okay. Do you have some more, Councillor?
I do, Your Worship.
Yeah, fire away. You did say you had a bunch.
Your Worship, subdivision walls. And oftentimes nowadays, when you go into a subdivision, you notice that they're marked with a, with a nice wall. And I would imagine that, and this is just the way I think about it. I might not have enough city staff yet, but the developer would build it and then the city would assume responsibility for it?
No.
No? Okay. Then that brings me to another question is, what do we do when the walls are crumbling? No pun intended.
Well, actually, if I could start off for this, because I brought this forward to our Director of Municipal Works a few years ago and the director before him a number of years ago, and we've got that exact problem. We get inferior walls built.
Yeah.
Or they're just aging and they start falling apart, falling into people's yards, especially an entrance. You know those brick gateways into an entrance? And what the developer's been doing in the past is they put it inside the property line. So the owner has to assume ownership or responsibility. These things are prematurely, I know the one specifically you're talking about across from Canadian Tire.
Yeah.
It's falling apart, literally bricks are falling off. And the owner, is he to rebuild this as a gateway into the whole subdivision? And that was our answer. And that, to me, has to be addressed when you're building a subdivision. Should there be a contingency fund? What should we do so that in the future, we don't have to deal with this type of an issue? And I see this listener's got his hand high in the air. So we'll ask Mr. Beeman if he could answer the question.
Oh, I love these. I just, oh, man. When I first encountered these, I was in private practice and these things, oh, they make you money. But unfortunately, I'm not in private practice anymore. But seriously, you just have to be prepared to fight with the developer at the time the thing goes in. Because they're not going to want any land under it because that means they can't sell the land. And of course, they want to pawn it off on some poor joker that has it in his backyard and doesn't know it's there. You know, like, what do you mean that's in my backyard? You know, oh, yeah, it is, sir. It's in your backyard. It's yours. It says right on your deed that you're supposed to maintain it, right? And nobody explained that to them until we arrived to get them to fix it. And a contingency fund is really what you need. But generally, certainly in my experience, they fight, the developers resist like heck wanting to. But without it, you have to make them, put some money aside to maintain the thing. And if you put it in the subdivision agreement, there's been, there's a couple that I did in Mississauga where we did it. Metro still hates my guts, but we did it. And the, but it is a, they are really a problem. And you do have to be prepared to dig in hard because they will resist and they don't like having that liability.
All right, thank you, Councillor Peter Angelo.
Yeah, Your Worship, perhaps then I can just pass a simple motion to have a report on us implementing a policy. I like the idea of having a contingency fund. I wasn't even thinking of that. I was thinking more of just set standards. Because I think when you go around, ones that I've seen that aren't in good shape, they don't have a cap on top.
Right.
And a lot of them have a big piece of stone on top and that eliminates the water from actually getting in there, breaking down the cement, breaking down the brick. So, I mean, standards would be a good place to start as well. So I'll make a motion, Worship, that we get a report on it.
That's great. On a contingency fund and standards for building these shared walls. That's great. Moved by Councillor Peter Angelo, second by Councillor Morocco. Any other discussion on the issue? All those in favor? That's a big unanimous. Yes? You have a few more things, Councillor?
No, last one, Your Worship. In Toronto, construction started on the new Ripley's Aquarium and I congratulate them. I think it's going to be a great project for Toronto. It'll be a great project to actually attract people from the U.S. to Canada as well because we don't have an aquarium like that around here. I was going to talk more about the deal that they struck. And they received ten million dollars from the federal government for building it on Crown lands. They received eleven million dollars from the province and I'm not sure what type of venue that came through. And they received anywhere from eight to twelve million dollars in tax breaks from the city of Toronto through what they call Imagination Manufacturing Innovation Technology Grants Program.
Hmm.
So, exactly. So I guess, Your Worship, I mean, when we sit around the table here and we talk about, you know, new manufacturing or new industry coming to our town, oftentimes you have people saying, well, give them free taxes for five years. And we say, you know what? We'd love to, but we're not allowed to do that. I don't really know that that's so sure anymore. So, Your Worship, I was hoping perhaps that maybe we could get some type of staff report. Doesn't have to be a full report, but even a memo on how Toronto's program works.
What's that called again?
It was called the Imagination Manufacturing Innovation Technology Grants Program.
Did you guys get that or do you need that repeated?
No, I got it.
You got it? Okay.
And if you just Google Ripley's Toronto Aquarium, you'll find out, or just grab the Toronto Star or the Toronto Sun newspaper article on it and you'll find it all there. And, Your Worship, this is nothing against Ripley's. I mean, I congratulate them for, you know, for pulling the deal together. I'm looking more at it from the perspective of especially you being the mayor, you know, going to China, going to Dubai, you know, being able to actually offer people that are interested in investing in Niagara Falls something, something, some type of carrot that would make them come here. So perhaps, Your Worship, it could be worthwhile if we explore it.
That's excellent.
Should I call it later or not?
Yeah, something fishy about that deal. What, what do you, do we have a motion? Do we need a motion on this? Yes, we'll get, get with a report. Okay, moved by Councillor Peter Angelo, second by Councillor Gates. All those in favor? Okay, that's great. It's good. Thanks for being proactive. That's what we need. More of this kind of stuff, more incentives, more excuses to come here to Niagara Falls. Did you have some more things, Councillor?